Good afternoon and welcome to our Glendale City Council Workshop. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. It's a work-study session only and allows the council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this workshop, and there will not be an opportunity for public comment. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of February 14, 2023. Meeting is called at order, and just really quick, I want to tell everybody we had an incredible Super Bowl. Happy Valentine's Day to my wife, which I may or may not see tonight, and also happy birthday, Arizona. Meeting is called at order. We'll do an attendance roll call, starting with Councilmember Oldama.
Present.
Councilmember Hugh.
Here.
Councilmember Melner. Councilmember Tomachov.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Vice Mayor.
Here.
And I'm present. If Councilmember Melner shows up, if you'd just take note, thank you. Ms. Barr, we're going to go ahead and just move right into item one. If you would go ahead and get us started, thank you.
Five-year forecast of the major funds.
Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. We're here to help discuss the first item. We're going to start the conversation with our budget manager. Amy is going to start, and then we'll have Levi and Vicky will help as well.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. This is the first meeting for the development of the fiscal year 2324 budget development process. The agenda for today, we will discuss the fiscal year 2324 budget overview. We will discuss the property tax levy, and then we will discuss the five-year financial forecasts for the general fund, special revenue funds, and the enterprise funds. This slide is the budget calendar, which is tentative for the fiscal year 2324 budget process. The first workshop, which is in red italics at the top, is what we will be discussing today, which is February 14. The second workshop will take place on March 7, where we will discuss the fiscal year 24 through 33 capital improvement plan. The city has a 10-year capital improvement program, which is why that date is fiscal year 24 through 33. We have two all-day budget workshops scheduled for April 4 and April 6, where the operating departments will be discussing their fiscal year 24 operating budget requests. And we have a fifth workshop on April 18, where we will show the final budget with all of the pieces of the budget put together. The last three meetings in the calendar are bold. These are the items in the budget calendar that have legally required deadlines. We do schedule our calendar so that legally required deadlines are much earlier than what is required by law. It allows us some flexibility with the calendar. The tentative budget adoption is scheduled on May 9 of 2023. This is where the maximum expenditure limitation is set upon adoption of the tentative budget. The legal requirement for that date is on or before the 3rd Monday in July of each fiscal year, so you can see that we're doing that a little earlier than legally required. The budget adoption and discussion of the property tax levy is scheduled for June 13, 2023. The legal requirement for final budget adoption is the 1st Monday in August, with at least 14 days between the adoption of the final budget and the adoption of the property tax levy. And then the adoption of the property tax levy is scheduled for June 27, 2023. The legal requirement for that date is to be adopted by the 3rd Monday in August. There are also requirements for publications that we have built into our internal calendar as well. This slide shows the budget process kind of in a general view. Council has seen most of these slides in previous years, and we kind of go through them every year just as a reminder. So right now, we will be presenting the five-year financial forecast to council. At the same time, the operating departments are working on their operating budget requests and the development of the capital improvement plan. We will then present pieces of the budget to council. Final adoption of the budget takes place in June, and then the staff prepares the budget book. This slide shows the components of the budget. Revenues are the funds that come into the city. The city's two primary sources of revenue are sales tax and state shared revenues. We monitor all revenues closely, but we especially keep an eye on city sales tax and state shared revenues. The operating expenditures are the day-to-day costs, such as police and fire operations, personnel costs, utilities, neighborhood and recreation programs, and things of that nature. The capital improvement plan, or capital outlay, are improvements to city streets, water and sewer lines, parks, and city facilities that are non-routine in nature, generally cost more than $50,000 and have a useful life of at least five years.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll ask the question at this point, and if it's somewhere else, just tell me. In this year's budget process, will we get, maybe too soon, will we have any update on revenue as a result of the Super Bowl towards the end of the budget or any time of the budget year this time?
Mayor, members of the council, we won't have that information because of the way that it is reported until, let's see, until at least April timeframe. But there will be a final report, is my understanding, of the entire Super Bowl revenues and also expenses and other metrics that are being tracked.
So that'll, thank you. And that'll be when, if it's April, that'll be part of the budget. Okay. Will you be presenting that separately or as part of the budget?
Mayor, members of the council, I believe there'll be a separate report.
We're planning a separate report.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Another expenditure component of the budget is debt service, which is principal and interest on the city's debt. Some types of debt service that the city has include the following: general obligation bond debt, which is paid with secondary property taxes; excise tax debt, which is paid by the general fund; transportation debt, which is paid by the transportation sales tax; water and sewer debt, which is paid by the water and sewer utility. We did issue landfill general obligation bonds in fiscal year '22. The debt service for those is paid for by the landfill utility. And we also issued certificates of participation, or commonly referred to as COPs, in fiscal year '22 to pay down unfunded liability in the Public Safety Personnel Retirement System, or PSPRS, and that debt service is paid by the general fund. The last component of the expenditure portion of the budget is contingency. Contingency is used for unforeseen expenditures and emergencies. It's an appropriated line item and is not a reserve fund or savings account such as fund balance. It's only spending authority. The general fund has $5 million in assumed contingency, excuse me, in the forecast, and the use of any contingency requires council approval. This next slide demonstrates the city's balanced budget. As you can kind of see, the teeter-totter is kind of leaning to the left a little bit because we typically do our budget where our revenues and fund balance exceed our expenditures. But in order to have a balanced budget, revenues and fund balance need to exceed expenditure or need to equal expenditures, excuse me.
The first financial policy that we'll be reviewing today is that of the property tax. And the property tax policy is to ensure ongoing general fund stability. The primary property tax levy will be evaluated each year to determine where it should be set. This image you have seen before, and it represents how the average property tax bill is divided among the various taxing authorities. The red circle represents the schools and is the largest component of the total tax bill. The yellow and gray circles are the two percentages that go to the city of Glendale. The yellow circle is the city of Glendale's primary property tax, which accounts for approximately 4% of the total tax bill. The gray circle is the city of Glendale's secondary property tax, which is voter-approved, and this category represents approximately 14% of the total tax bill. The total percentage of the tax bill that goes to the city of Glendale is about 18%. This slide is an example of a home within the city of Glendale. The example represents the full cash value of the home at $378,000 and has an assessed value of $358,520 for tax purposes. For those that are viewing this presentation, tax bills are calculated based on the assessed value and not the full cash value. Glendale's primary and secondary tax rates are listed in red in the example. The combined rate, both the primary and the secondary, is $1.72 in 2021 and decreases to $1.67 in 2022. Glendale's total of the 2021 tax bill is approximately $589.24, and the total for 2022 tax bill is $598.76. The total increase in Glendale's portion of the tax bill from 2021 to 2022 is $9.52. This is a simple example to demonstrate a 2% increase in the primary levy. It does not assume any new construction or increase in assessed valuation. Primary levy is the amount of revenue collected per the adopted property tax rate. Council has the option of increasing the primary tax levy by a maximum of 2% annually, which is the legally allowable limit. This example uses the fiscal year '23 adopted property tax levy for both the primary and secondary property tax and applies a 2% increase to the primary levy only. The amount of general fund revenue generated by a 2% increase would be approximately $336. This next slide shows the cumulative effect of a flat primary property tax levy. For fiscal year 1617, that was the first year that council opted not to increase the levy. Council has not increased the levy for the past seven years. The cumulative amount for fiscal year '23 through '24 would be about $950,000, and that's represented by each one of those boxes across those fiscal years. The total amount of unrealized revenue from fiscal year 16 to fiscal year '2223 is $4.2 So as a reminder, the primary levy can be used for any general fund expense. There's an allowable 2% increase per year, and the cumulative increase over those seven years, as noted on the prior slide, is approximately $950,000. At this time, we would like to receive council consensus that you would like to have the primary tax levy remain flat for fiscal year '2324.
Well, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I certainly don't want to see it increased.
I agree. No increase.
I agree, Mayor. No increase.
We've started a process of not having tax increases for seven years. We need to keep it up.
I agree with all comments.
Shame here. Good.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the secondary property tax. This slide represents the secondary property tax history and, as you can, for the last eight years. And as you can see from the graph, the amount remains relatively flat and has only increased due to new property added to the tax rule. The secondary property tax exclusively pays for general obligation bond debt service. And for a reminder, the secondary levy pays for general obligation bonds only. We've assumed a current flat levy, and the only increase is related to new construction added to the tax rules. As such, we're looking to obtain council consensus to remain, to have the secondary tax levy remain flat.
Again, you're looking for consensus?
Yes.
Okay. Again, I feel the same way. I think we've done a good job keeping it status quo the way we've done the last seven years.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
I agree.
We're going to be done in a couple minutes at this rate.
So with that, we'll move on to our five-year financial forecast. So the long-term financial planning considers economic conditions and future spending as a best practice that provides insight to the city's future financial capacity, ability to deliver core services, and achieve financial sustainability. It's a tool that can be used to foresee and prevent financial challenges in the future, and it is useful when we're communicating with our ratings, our rating agencies. For us, the five-year financial forecast represents the first step in the fiscal year '2324 budget process. As a reminder, a forecast is a high-level overview. When we are developing our forecasting model, we look to the Government Finance Officers' Association best practices in developing that model. Additionally, we develop and collect data from multiple sources throughout the state to help us develop that model. We look to the Arizona Department of Revenue, Arizona League of Cities and Towns, Arizona Joint Legislative Budget Committee, the Arizona Department of Transportation, and our own historical data for the prior five years. We also talk with our peer cities throughout the valley to take into account what they are considering looking forward to the next five years. A five-year forecast shows long-term impacts of current year budget decisions. We also highlight financial trends within the general fund, special revenue funds, and our enterprise funds. So within the general fund, we have some revenue assumptions for fiscal year '23, '24, and out. So for our fiscal year '23, we have noted an 8% increase over the original budget in our city sales tax. This is, represents our budgeted amount of $160 million being revised up to $173 million. This is due to a conservative forecast for fiscal year '23 and is based, the $173 million to date is based on year-to-date actual forecasted to the end of the year. Our state shares, or our, assumptions include conservative growth for fiscal years '24 through '28. We assume reductions in construction sales tax beginning in fiscal year '24 and reaching our average trend in fiscal year '28. We've also assumed a 2% average growth for all other categories within the forecast.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have the amount of overestimated or what the estimated amount for fiscal year of city sales tax revenues was for fiscal year '22 forecast and what the number came in at? Does anybody know that number? We were, when we were presented with the down campus and that there was a lot more money in the, available for that, and we were told that that was sales tax. So do we have that number?
Mayor and council, we don't have that number with us today, but we can get that for you.
Okay. And I imagine everybody would like to have that, not just me. Thank you.
So additionally, our state shared sales tax forecast is consistent with the Department of Revenue's forecast. Our state shared income tax is based on state income tax collected two years ago. We also assume that because Arizona made a change going, oh.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
You mentioned state shared sales tax, consistent with Department of Revenue report. What does their report state in terms of their forecast?
So, Mayor, council member, their forecast is similar to ours in that they have seen growth in sales tax over the last year, but they are forecasting in the future that that will return to their normal trend, which is about 3% to 4%.
Okay. Thank you.
So additionally, the state shared income tax, as I mentioned, is based on what was collected two years ago. We know based on changes made during the last legislative cycle that Arizona will be moving to a flat tax for income tax of individuals, and so we've assumed a small decrease in the income tax related to that flat move towards the flat tax. Additionally, we've included one-time sales tax revenues for mega events, the Super Bowl and the Final Four. We typically set our revenues equal to our expenditures for those mega events. We've also updated our ASTA repayment schedule for Camelback Ranch.
Mayor?
Where do we see the ASTA repayment schedule? Is it in here?
It is not, but we can get that to you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, the next slide is mine to cover. Back in December, you had asked us to spend a little more time this year during the budget process talking about, in particular, about the city's sales tax and, in particular, on top of that, some of the one-time revenues that we're seeing coming in. So this chart has, for five years, I believe, of history of sales tax, and then also a column that shows you for the first six months of here of fiscal year '23 what we've seen coming in. Excuse me. So I'd like to take a look first at the second line that says "construction." If you notice, you'll see we were trending along somewhere around six, you know, six and a half, seven million dollars a year in construction sales tax. It nearly doubled in fiscal year 1920. Another about four and a half million was added in 2021, and another 10 million in fiscal year 2122. This is what we mean when we say this is one-time revenue because we were trending along somewhere around maybe seven million, a little bit less, and you just see those large increases. We're trending this year to come in again, maybe somewhere around 25 to 26 million. But that is not sustainable. At some point, it's likely to drop. Will it drop all the way back to 6.8? We don't know, but that's when the staff is saying that in fiscal year '24, we anticipate some, it will start dropping because there isn't as much building and construction that is going to be.
Hold up. We've got one more question, and then I'm going to ask everybody to hold your questions. But Lauren, go ahead and do your question right now.
Okay. So basically, at least based on this spreadsheet, it looks like the increase in over, from, let's just say where it started to increase in fiscal year 1920, a total of four million, five million, then four million, and then about nine million for in construction sales tax, for a total of about $18 million more in construction sales tax than was anticipated in a five-year forecast, say, from fiscal year 2018. Is that about accurate?
Mayor, members of the council, there's a difference between looking at what it increased by and what we had in the budget. And so when we say, we'll have to get back to you on what did we budget, we would have budgeted some type of increase, so how much that is over and above what we budgeted, I can't tell you without looking at it. But yes, I can tell you that it increased significantly, almost doubling, like I said, by, or around five million in '20, and then another four and a half, and then 10, and probably another, you know, it won't be up by 10 this year, but it will be on the mark of being around 25 million.
So about, about steady is what it was for fiscal year '23?
It does appear that it's running about steady to what it was last year, this year.
All right. Thank you.
Looking at the next line down at Hotel Motel, that's a little bit different. You can see it was trending along around 3.8 million. You can see some of the impact of COVID-19 there in fiscal year 1920. It did drop slightly, but then it comes back up here in '2122 and is on track to be around $6 million again this year. That's addition of hotel rooms. We had a lot of hotel rooms added, and we will be adding additional hotel rooms. So that's more of an ongoing source of revenue. Next, I want to come down to the line where it says rentals. And again, if you have questions about any of these, I can try and answer them, but I'm just highlighting some of the ones that I feel are very pertinent. On the category of rentals, you see it trending up, and it increases, you know, about four million or so last year in '2122, and it's on trend to probably around 25 to 28 million this year. What I want to point out to council, number one, is we have seen a jump in rents, but also we have seen an enormous amount of rental assistance paid. So we had a lot in Glendale, fortunately for us, from the federal government, giving and supplying rental assistance to our residents. Again, we have to keep an eye on that. We don't know if that will, it will be sustainable because the federal assistance is going away.
Mayor?
Yeah. If we could, if we could hold these questions, at least let her get through these slides.
Okay.
Is yours go all the way through to the end, or do you have a break and somebody else picks it up?
As soon as I finish this slide, I'll take a break, and you guys can answer.
Okay. Let's do it that way. Let her finish this slide, and then we'll take questions.
Okay. But just for the record, she said if she had questions, feel free to interrupt.
I understand.
Thank you.
We're going to give you a chance to ask your question.
Okay. And then the next one I'm going to point to is retail sales. And so again, you see a pretty big jump in retail sales between 1920 and 2021. That is the impact of a couple of things: stimulus money that was put into the economy, and in addition to that, general inflation. And then you see it jump again in fiscal year '2122, and it's on target to be around that same number, somewhere around 118 to 120 million this year. That's the impact of inflation, and again, stimulus money that was, you know, infused into the economy. That's another area where we have to keep an eye. I don't know if that's sustainable because inflation is moderating, as we know now, and also there isn't that money coming in, you know, from the feds the way it did in 2021 and 2022. And some economists are predicting, in fact, that it will, that will have some type of recession in the next, in the next two to three years. You can see the next line down. That is spending on large-ticket items. You see, it doesn't grow as much because when, when there's money in the economy, but it's not enough to buy those large-ticket items, you don't see that one increasing as quickly. I would like to point out, just again, because it's kind of interesting, you actually see telecom and cable TV decreasing. Why is that? More people are going to streaming services, and they're not getting cable TV, and they're no longer getting telephones either. And so this is a source of revenue that is decreasing. And then the last category is utilities. That is very seasonal. It just depends on what the weather is doing, and so when you have a hot summer, you have more revenue. You have a cold winter, you have more revenue. Then when you have a warm winter, you don't have as much revenue, and so it kind of tends to follow the, it will increase because there are rate increases, but it actually tends to follow the weather more. And so with that, I'll answer, be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Vicky. Question on rentals that you had mentioned. Does that line include residential and commercial and equipment rental tax, or is it not?
Mayor, members of council, yes, it does. It includes, we lumped all of those together, so that's residential, commercial, and real property, or I'm sorry, personal property.
Okay. On, is it possible to get a breakdown on what the residential portion would be?
Yes. I can get you that number. I've had that number out before, but, yes, I can get you that number.
Okay. That's something that we might be curious about, given conversations down on Washington Street. And the other one I had marked was the retail sales greater than 5,000. It's actually almost doubled since the 1718 fiscal year, so it's doubled in five years, which to me is pretty significant. Is that a result of the, the new car dealerships we have, or do you have an indicator of what that might be?
Mayor, members of the council, I have to look into that a little bit more. I do know that one thing that impacts it is the motorhome sales. So you'll see a lot of RV sales as high-dollar items, and the city does have a pretty robust showing of RV sales. But other than that particular item that I sort of keep track of, I'd have to look into it more to tell you more what that is.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Rentals, I have a question also. We have a lot of new rental properties coming online, especially in the Middletown area. Doesn't that account for a great deal of this increase?
Mayor, members of the council, that would be part of it, too. That's a little bit harder for us to distinguish, right? We know rents are going up. We've seen demographic information saying the rent is going up, and we're also adding units. So it's a combination of, of both of those things.
Okay. And then under retail sales, and you're asterisk, and one-time revenues, that's really confusing because retail sales are ongoing. So you're saying... So you're saying what portion of the retail sales is one-time?
Mayor, members of the council, we're saying we have to keep an eye on that because the impact of inflation and then inflation going away means that that's probably not sustainable at that level. But I can't, I don't have a crystal ball to tell you exactly how much of it we would consider to be one-time. We would just recommend.
It's really not one-time, it's really not one-time revenue, period, is it?
Mayor, members of the council, it depends on how you look at it. To us, the increase in it is probably one-time due to inflation and stimulus money, but there is a level of it, obviously, that is ongoing. So some, but some portion of that is one-time caused by inflation and stimulus money.
Okay. That's very confusing to most people, I would think. I understand it now, but there could be a better explanation for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Is there any reason why the city sales tax presentation exempts the 2.5% food tax? And if it's in here, can you tell me why it's not broken out?
Mayor, members of the council, it is in there. It would be part of retail sales, and it's just not one of the categories we typically split out separately. But if you're, you know, interested, I know I've given that number out as well before, and we do have that information. It's just, this is kind of the categories we use. These are the ones that are used in the comprehensive annual, or annual comprehensive financial report as well.
Mayor, thank you. I'd like to see it lined out here. It is a 2.5 tax rate. 1.9 is general fund. 0.1% goes to public safety. 0.5 to transportation. That hasn't changed. I'd like to see it broken out. It's a, it's a separate tax, and it should be broken out. Can we see that in our next budget meeting? And the total amount of the revenue for the past fiscal year? We had it in the, in the budget workshop in '21, '22, so it should carry on in every budget session. Thank you. I've seen heads nod, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I thought we had, maybe I misunderstood. I thought we had a policy of having that discussion as part of our budget discussion every year, whether we wanted to address the food tax or not. Probably maybe going to be done for us at some point, but that's, that was the way I understood it. But I did have a question on retail sales as well. How, how, are you able to determine any of that effect from the Wayfair legislation? Because I would think that would, I mean, that increased things that were being taxed.
Mayor, members of the, of the council, yes, I am able to do that. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head because I had to get that number for someone recently, but it's not coming to me. So that's also something that I'd have to get back to. And there'll be some in the retail sales over 5,000, but most of that's going to be just in the regular retail sales.
Right. And but I, and I don't necessarily need to know the number, but I mean, it kind of, when you look at it, it kind of aligns with, I think it went into effect in, in 2020, 2019, somewhere around in there where you see the big jump. And I'm just wondering how much of that is attributed to the taxing of online sales. So I'm just curious about that. And then the other question I had was RV sales, because I don't, I don't know if we have any other RV dealers. I know that they have a lot of RV shows at the stadium, but I was under the impression that we didn't get any of that sales tax.
Mayor, members of council, that's, that's not correct. And, but yes, I am talking about sales out of the stadium. They're rather, they can be robust. We cannot share exactly those numbers with you because that's confidential information. We don't have enough RV sales entities within the city to aggregate that information in such a way that it would not give away a particular taxpayer's information. So I can't tell you what it is. I can just tell you that they are robust. We do rebate a portion of that sales tax back to the Sports and Tourism Authority, but we do not rebate back to them our transportation or public safety sales tax portion of that revenue. In addition to that, we don't net it out. So in other words, it's still going to be in this number, and then you see the expense of it going out as part of a sales tax rebate.
So Mayor, if I could, what percentage then are we able to, what percentage of the, that was him, not me?
When, when you come back and you make a report, maybe Mr. Lee or Mr. Stoddard, someone to, to report on that. But on the Wayfair, it's commonly believed that when that law was enacted, that all of a sudden we got this massive boost in tax revenue, when in fact, most of the major players, the Walmarts and all those folks, are already were paying tax. So I agree that it would be nice to know what it is, but also I'd like to break down that it's actually smaller than what everybody seems to think.
Mayor, members of council, that's correct. It's, it's also going to look differently because we began to capture it at that point in time. So to go back and say, well, five, through five years of history, what did it look like? We can't do that because we didn't start capturing it until that, the law changed, and then we set up a specific category to begin capturing it. So it's a little hard to keep track of, you know, what, how much of it was here before.
Right. But whatever you can do when you do give that report, that'd be nice to have that included.
So Mayor, members of council, we were looking for sort of a consensus and some feedback here to continue, you know, and, and to or to not change any of our sales tax rates. That's very important for the forecast. You'll see it does not assume any change in rates on any of the categories, and so we were looking for council to have that discussion at this time.
All right. Well, I'm perfectly fine to leave it the way it is. Would you like to repeat it one more time?
Yes, please.
Mayor, members of council, we were looking for consensus to move forward in the budget process with the sales tax rates as they are, given this information.
I'm a yes. Mayor.
Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. At one time, I was pushing pretty hard for a reduction of the temporary sales tax portion for many years. That was my position. But in the last several years, I've noticed that most communities are raising different categories or portions of their sales tax. And I'm beginning to think that, that although we may have been ahead of the time or ahead of the curve, we're probably pretty contemporary with other cities right now. So I am not interested in changing the current formula. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I am interested. I'm always interested in lowering the tax burden on our residents. The challenge is which tax? And we have a couple of them that are in play at the state legislature that because of that creates a level of uncertainty that would make it difficult for us to make a well-reasoned decision. But, I mean, so the food tax is under question at the legislature. The residential rental tax is under question at the legislature. We have a commitment, I think, to our residents to always review our general sales tax, particularly the seven tenths of a percent increase that was approved on a quote temporary basis under a sunshine. And when that came off, I think there's a commitment that we should always be looking at an opportunity to reduce that. But I don't want, it's difficult that we could be in a position of deciding, well, we're going to reduce our general sales tax and then have the legislature take away one or two or both of the other taxes I just mentioned. Or we could pick one of those, and, and the other one could be taken away from us. So it's, we're in a difficult spot right now. I would like to see how we compare to peer cities here in the valley for our sales tax rates. And, and that might give us an opportunity to look at how competitive we are and on general sales tax or other taxes, too. I know we have a transportation tax that other cities don't, but I think it's probably good for us to get a better, get a clear picture of how we compare to peer cities. And also, perhaps we should be looking at a strategy of if the legislature is going to reduce or eliminate one or the other for us, which one would we prefer it be, and what kind of a strategy we would like that to take place under, a phase out probably rather than a cold turkey. So I think we have some work to do in this area, but we need some information first. Thank you. Mayor.
Yeah, hold on a second. Did, did you say earlier that the state was implementing a form of flat tax? It's going to be less revenues to the city?
Yes.
Mayor, members of the council, yes, that's regarding flat income tax.
Okay. So that, that even more instills my, my belief that, you know, if we can stay where we're at this year, next year we may have to make some adjustments, but right now, I don't want to drop something when we know we're already having other money coming in less, and we're looking in the future of a forecast that could be less, too. That could be a trifecta that could hurt us. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, I, you know, to, to give you consensus to keep our rates the way they are, it's a little difficult, and a little disappointed that the food tax is not in here because we know that the legislature is going to hear this. There's Republican legislators, legislators who are moving to get this passed to reduce it, or eliminate, I should say. There's no reason why we shouldn't have that line itemed out, and we should be planning on reviewing that every year. And I believe in 2017, myself and a couple of the council members asked specifically that every year we have a conversation during our budget session, what is a reduction in our sales tax and our food tax looks like? Looks like it wasn't included here. So I would say, I would echo some of Councilmember Turner's comments in that we need to be proactive, and we need to start looking at what do those reductions look like, especially the food tax, if legislators are planning on submitting that as one of their items. And so I just a little mind-boggled why the food tax wasn't included. But we should look at our sales tax, and we should look at food tax, we should look at all of them. Are we, are we trending in the right direction? And if we're conservative, then we need to start looking at our sales tax as a whole. And finally, for those who are watching, when, when you reduce taxes, there's a slew of results of where that money has to come from. But it's a common theme that in this city, that public safety is always the brunt of that. And so you, we can do reductions or even look at them and forecast them without holding public safety, hold them harmless. But it's, it's a common theme here that public safety, and then it gets turned off. So let's look at it holistically. I think now's the time. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor.
Lauren.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with many of the comments that Councilmember Turner made regarding, we're kind of in an area of sales tax that we don't know what the legislature is going to do. I would be, I think we're missing my duties if I were to say, let's just go ahead and reduce the sales tax or reduce something, and then the legislature comes by and reduces other things further. I think we have to wait and see what the legislature does. The, the other point that was made about, I think Councilmember Aldama referred to it, that we do bring this back, and I was one of those that asked that it come back every year. But we did have that conversation. It was about a month ago. We had a pretty robust conversation on the sales tax, on the food sales tax, and we decided with consensus not to reduce it this year, I believe, is what we decided. So we did have the discussion, and we did go through that process, and it was a pretty lengthy conversation, as I recall, in a workshop, like I said, it was about a month ago, as I recall. So my, my part in this is I believe we need to let things stay as they are. At some point in time, we may be able to consider doing something, but at this point in time, I think we need to wait and see what the legislature does. We know there is a recession on the horizon. When recessions hit cities, sales taxes hit extremely hard. And as it hit in our last major recession in the 2008 era, we had significant cuts in our services to our residents. And we've only now gotten them up, back up to almost par to where they were in 2000, prior to 2008. And I've seen, when I talk to residents, most of the things that we are doing with our roads, with our parks, and with all the things that we're trying to accomplish, you know, building construction, improving downtown with our investment, which is going to be a major change. You know, I've had residents recently say, what are you going to do to help downtown? Well, the investment in downtown is going to do that. We're setting a precedent for other businesses to jump in with us, and it will happen. And so to say, let's, let's cut some revenues or cut some sales tax right now, I think there's too many questions, too many items that we don't know about. We don't know when the recession is going to hit. We don't know what the legislature is going to do to reduce sales tax on food and/or rentals, which will be significant cuts to our budget. And, and to preempt that and say, well, we're going to cut first, I don't think is wise. We need to first see where it's going to go, take a look at our budget at that point in time, and determine if indeed we can make any kind of additional cuts. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Phelps.
Mayor, members of the council, we'll, we'll get the information to you. At December 13th, we did have a workshop on this item. We did provide, and we can pull up that information, we'll resend it back out. We did provide what the food tax amount was by, you know, by each increment that's there, so we'll get that back out. I think I'll take responsibility. We, because we'd had that detailed discussion back in December, we, you know, we just, I felt it was not necessary to break it out a second time, but we'll get the information to you and make sure that in the future, future budget presentations, that we'll continue to kind of break that out as a separate side note. But again, we did have a separate workshop on December 13th where we did go into that detail. But we'll, we'll get that corrected, and we'll get that out to you, even hopefully this afternoon, we'll re, refor that information out to you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think the difference is, because I just went back and reviewed the December discussion, but the difference is, is taking a look at, and also the rental tax. I mean, I would like to know, we're potentially, you know, depending on what the, what the legislature does and whether, you know, whether they can get it up to the ninth floor and whether the governor signs it or not, we don't know any of that. But I, we're kind of playing in the dark without knowing how much of this is residential rental tax? What is that number? And how much of this retail sales tax is food tax? I mean, we have updated information, but how, how would, what would be the effect on the budget also? Like what, we don't have any, I mean, that's, I think, what, at least the way my, what I would like to know is what would it look like if we eliminated the food tax? What would it look like if we started scaling back? Just so we could at least have a look at what the budget, I know a few years ago, we had some sort of tool where you could plug things in and take things out of the budget, where we could look at, actually see how, what would happen? Because I think it's, it's all kind of abstract without being able to look at actually what the effect on our budget would be. Instead of saying, and the December was, we're going to have to lay people off, and we're going to have to affect public safety, and we're going to have to do all this other stuff. I mean, we could look at plugging things in and taking things out so that we're not caught, you know, I don't, you know, unprepared in the event that we have to be, react, react to changes that are outside of our control. So the more we know now, the better prepared we're going to be. And nobody, I don't think anybody is saying because of the uncertainty that we're going to do anything this year. But I, I don't understand not being prepared and having the conversations of what would it look like if we have to make those changes. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So you have a consensus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to turn over, back over to Mr. Gibson.
With that, we'll talk about our general fund expenditure assumptions. We know that over the last year, that inflation has been elevated. As you may be aware, the Federal Reserve has increased interest rates at the federal level eight times over the last year, and it is anticipated by the market that additional rate hikes will be necessary in 2023 to try and control inflation and get back to their target rate of 2%. Therefore, we have included about a 9.2% average increase across operating expenses for fiscal year '24, 5% for fiscal year '25, and 4% for fiscal years '26 through '28. What this translates to for salaries is that's a $10.8 million increase for fiscal year '24, and it's a $4.6 million increase for benefits and retirement in fiscal year '24. Additionally, within our expenditure assumptions, we've added in those items that have received council consensus previously, including the local match for three police FTEs under the COPS grant, the addition of three park rangers for the new park ranger program, an addition of one sergeant, four officers, and two civilian personnel for the M-Rope program. We've also included increases in risk management, workers' comp, and shop charges. Additionally, there is a four-year replacement plan for police radio replacements included, an amount for fire heart monitor replacements. an amount for fire heart monitor replacements. We've included an amount related to the right-of-way landscaping program that you saw recently. Additionally, we've programmed amounts of debt obligations for our certificate of participation with our contribution rates, which is equal to 18.8 million in debt service for fiscal year '24, and increases to 20.4 million for fiscal year '25 through '28. Additionally, as you may remember, when we issued those, we made a promise to the bondholders that we would include a pension reserve fund of 20 million funded by 2024, and happy to report that we will be able to do that. Additionally, we focused on deferred maintenance. We're including an additional $1.8 million per year for building maintenance reserve.
Mayor. I have a question about the page you just covered.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Gibson, I'm confused. You talk about operating expenses and you say there's an increase due to inflation. Am I to assume the 9.2 average is your inflationary increase? But then you have under that salaries 10 million, benefits 4.6. Those are just the normal costs of doing business for not this city but any city in that we typically increase salaries and benefits on an annual basis. So are you attributing the 10 million and the 4 million to inflationary factors?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, so the 9.2% is our average across-the-board increase due to inflation. What that translates to in dollars for salaries and benefits is equal to that $10.8 million. So we are increasing our salaries by that 9.2%, and the dollar value of that increase is the 10.8 million for.
But that's, that's not an inflationary increase. Every year, council makes a decision usually to increase salaries and benefits. So how can you claim that that is now an inflationary expense? That's what I'm having trouble understanding.
Mayor, members of the council, I think we're just kind of getting caught up in the semantics here. What we're really saying and trying to, to point out is what we've assumed in this model in terms of what kinds of increases. And when we were saying there's an average increase of 9.2%, some things in this model, and again, this is just a forecast, this is not the actual budget, so we're here trying to kind of give you an idea where the city sits financially and what some of the assumptions are moving forward. But some things in terms of inflation have been very high, and so things like contracts, things like, again, contracts, but where we have service providers, minimum wages have gone up, and those contracts are coming in higher. So there could be some things in this budget that are, you know, over 10%, and that's because of inflation, but there could be other things where we've just assumed a normal sort of a 5% increase. So that's kind of where we get that, that average idea is some are higher, some are lower, but on average, we built in 9.2%. And then as Mr. Gibson is saying, we just broke out salaries and benefits separately to let you know that the impact, and yes, it's not all inflation, but it's what we anticipate having to increase general fund salaries by in the next year is 10.8. And what we, what we've assumed in this model, we'll have to increase benefits and retirements by is 4.6 million. But they're not necessarily exactly related to just inflation. It's all of those things. And yes, typically, council does approve something in the way of salaries. We just haven't made an assumption what that is right now. We've only built in a flat dollar amount instead of a percentage.
And the reason I bring this up is typically it's around 2.5% in terms of salary increase. It's been higher sometimes and lower sometimes. So equating a 2.5 on average salary increase with a 9.2 is, you talk about semantics, that's really semantics, and driving a discussion that gives the impression, general impression, that salaries are going to go up by 9.2%.
Mayor, members of the council, that, that is what we're trying not to do. What we're trying to do is to go, on average, things are going up about that much, what salaries we've built in a flat number, not a percentage, to not give people the impression that we're going to raise salaries by 9.2% because that has yet to be determined.
Yes, well, thank you.
What I would like to remind council though, is that over the past several years, yes, we had been giving employees about 2.5%, and I want to say we did that probably for about five years. But the last two years, they've been closer to 5% and then last year, 7%. And there was a built-in component for performance pay. So some of that is related, as I said, to performance pay, and it just has not been determined yet this year what that's going to look like.
Okay. Well, the only thing I would say is you created exactly the opposite effect, but thank you anyhow.
Please continue.
So going back to the, to the next slide, we focused on deferred maintenance, additional ongoing funding for park maintenance, and we've increased that from 1 million to 1.5 million per year. We've included amounts for Camelback Ranch capital repair and maintenance, typically about 1.5 million per year. We've also focused on exterior building repair and maintenance with 1.3 million per year. Additionally, we've increased the vehicle replacement fund from 3 million to 3.2 million, and this represents an 8% increase. We've also included funding for scallop streets of 4 million in fiscal year '24, and as I previously stated, we planned mega events with expenditures of 3 million for fiscal year '23 and a million for fiscal year '24.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. And we've already had the presentation in the workshop, but we had, I believe, a consensus to move ahead with the right-of-way. Just want to make sure that it's being included. I don't see it here, but it's something that we haven't done before. But we did agree to allocate expenses and even, I think, to accelerate addressing the right-of-ways.
Mayor, members of the council, that was on the previous slide. The right-of-way is built in. It's about the second to the last bullet on there. It has been built into the general fund budget for the forecast. I don't see it.
It's after the heart monitors.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Where, in this presentation, maybe we're not there yet, I looked around, I haven't seen it. So the council approved a fuel, a fuel charge or fuel increase because of the cost of fuel. Fuel has since gone down, and we all talked about potentially having a discussion on other fuel charges because of, you know, public safety. So is there anything in here with regard to that? Are we not expecting any because it reverted backwards? What's, what's the thought process on fuel?
So Mayor and Councilmember Aldama, the fuel surcharge is within our enterprise funds, and so we will get to that with the next few slides after we get through the general fund.
Excellent, thank you. And then my last question is, on the increases that you're showing here, for example, the, the park maintenance went from 1 million to 1.5, where will we see the reasons for that and where it went to? Can you explain so those who are watching don't know?
Mayor, council member. So we will talk about those during the operating budget workshops that will happen in April, and the council and the public will be able to see how those amounts have been allocated within the operating department's budgets.
Excellent, thank you.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Regarding the $4 million estimated for the next budget in scallop streets, do we have an opportunity to recoup that money when that property, that street fronts gets developed?
Mayor, members of the council, my understanding is that is not typical, that we don't typically recoup that funding when that property is developed, that we do those because the property has remained undeveloped for some period of time.
Thank you. If memory serves me and the legislature hasn't reversed over the years, there is an opportunity in statute for us to lean that adjacent property and then recoup that money down the road because we're actually doing an improvement that the developer would be obligated to do, but we're doing it for public safety purposes. So maybe, maybe that's a discussion I should have with Mr. Bailey, and if it still exists as an opportunity, then it might be something we would explore. Thank you.
Yeah, if I could, one example I can think of that, that we wouldn't probably want to do that, is a gentleman that's contacted my office several times over, over many years, Joyce is familiar with him. But his house was built when it was county. It was county. We accepted it as a city. There's a true need to go ahead and put sidewalks and pavement and everything there. I don't know how we could go back and then try to lean that property when in fact it wasn't Glendale when it was done.
No, just for my clarification, I don't know if that individual, it's his personal residence is going to remain that way. So that wouldn't be my example. My example was when that property came in to be developed. So like, for example, up and down 83rd Avenue between Northern and Glendale is probably the, so scallop street example. Some of those were a vacant parcel that maybe was formerly agriculture, has been developed into a neighborhood. That developer at that time put in curb gutter sidewalk and a half-street improvement. So then, you know, if we're going to do it on the vacant lot next door, then it would only be fair to that first developer that we recoup the cost of that, or no, fair to our taxpayers, that we recoup the cost of curb gutter sidewalk that we put in now when that vacant parcel gets developed five or 10 years from now. Now, for somebody who it's just their private property, then, and they're remaining there and they're not selling it for development, I would agree with, you know, your take on it, that that's, that would be an unfair burden, you know, to do. But if it's, you know, if it's owned for what they're doing and upzoned, then I would say, but where we have an opportunity to fairly recoup for our taxpayers investments we make in, that improves the value of private property, I think we have an obligation to do it. Thank you.
Okay, back on track.
Additional general fund expenditure assumptions that we've included within the forecast is funding for the downtown campus reinvestment project, which includes 85.7 million total project budget per council consensus on January 24th, 2023. This includes amounts of 14.0 million for general governmental bonds, 10.5 million for cultural facility bonds, 4.5 million for park bonds, 7.5 million of ARPA, and 49.2 million fund balance from the general fund. Additionally, we budget for council contingency of 5 million per year. And again, a reminder that use of that contingency requires council approval.
Go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, I'm going to be making a budget request for general fund, so would this be the appropriate time to do that?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, okay, I'll just, so I would like to have an FTE in the budget that acts as the city treasurer as designed by the city charter, and I'll read what the charter says. The charter says, "The council shall appoint an officer of the city who shall have the title of city treasurer and who shall receive and have custody of all the money of the city and shall keep and save said money and dispense the same only as provided by the laws of the state or as provided by ordinance and who shall always be bound by the constitution, laws, and ordinance upon whom legal garnishments and demands may be served." He, which is the only part I object to, it says he, "will serve at the pleasure of the council," which is exactly the same wording as our other appointed officials. And I know that the, we are, have been appointing the budget and finance director as the city treasurer, but that violates the city charter. The charter, the voters clearly wanted the treasurer, which I think is essentially the budget and finance director, to report to the city council. I mean, if we don't want to appoint, add an FTE, I would be fine with having a discussion about reclassifying our budget and finance director as an appointed official, but the voters clearly wanted an open line of communication between the budget, the city's money, the finances, and the council. It was, it was approved by the voters in our charter. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, I think the appropriate, this today is really to talk about assumptions that we're building into our budget as we then start constructing our operating budget. There'll be all-day workshops on that. I think that would be the appropriate time to make that request. Today, we're just trying to show what our assumptions are for revenue, what our assumptions are for expenditures. There'll be, during the actual workshop of rolling out the operating budget would be probably the more appropriate time to make the request.
Okay, well, Mayor, I will make the request again, but please consider the request made. Thank you.
With that, we'll show you the general fund forecast based on all the assumptions that we've talked about previously. Want to note that along the side, we include our general fund fund balance, our operating revenue, operating expenditures, net transfers, and the contingency amount. Assigned fund balance, our placeholders for anticipated expenditures and reduction in revenues from an economic downturn, and those assigned fund balance amounts associated with fire apparatus, mega events, CAP, DCRP have been included within this because, so for fire apparatus, CAP, DCRP, those are included within the capital improvement plan. With that, happy to take any questions related to the amounts. As you can see, through the five-year forecast, we meet our fund balance target with the exception of the final year, fiscal year '27, '28, when we take into account that contingency line item. If we do not spend our contingency line item, we'll meet our fund balance target for the entire five years of the, of the forecast.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Okay, so you're talking about the 49.2 million? Will we have to reaccumulate? I just want to understand, will we have to reaccumulate our contingency?
No, so if we don't use our contingency, sorry, Mayor, council member, if we do not use our contingency throughout the five-year forecast, then that amount will change and will be above our fund balance target.
Okay.
Typically, we have not used our contingency to that $5 million level in the past.
$5 million you're talking about.
All right. You're looking for... So I've got a couple more slides and then we'll move on to the enterprise funds. So for fiscal year '23, we're anticipating an increase in our general fund reserve. This is due to our city sales tax revenues. Additionally, we've included $107.3 million of investment in capital improvements for council-approved projects and deferred maintenance throughout the city. One thing that we like to note as budget professionals is we typically want to monitor our revenues and the economy closely because any shift in that can have a effect upon our forecast. Typically, we forecast very conservatively, and we want to make sure that we adjust that for any inflation risk or recessions in future years.
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to comment on the general fund summary in total. This is an exceptional budget with exceptional growth, and a lot of it is due to all of the activity out at the Loop 303 and, and our one-time funds. But the point I'm making is, is that we are moving in the right direction in that we're taking this one-time money, this one-time found money that we dug up at the Loop 303 and we're using it for one-time projects, which is as it should be. And we're not trying to use this money to somehow or other defer or minimize expenditures that are ongoing because that's the wrong way to use it. I want to commend staff in general for continuing to remain conservative in your forecast. I think that's very important. And I want to also commend staff for realizing that council's intent is to use this money for one-time projects and to adhere to that rather than hiring 200 new people on staff. We really do, I think council really does appreciate the focus and your direction on the expenditure of this one-time money. Thank you very much.
With that, excuse me, we will move into the special revenue funds. These funds are legally restricted. The transportation and HERF funds are capital intensive. Those capital plans will be updated during the budget process. You guys will see those on March 7th. The revenue assumptions for the special revenue funds, the highway user revenue fund, or commonly referred to as HERF, we show conservative growth. Transportation sales tax, public safety sales tax for both police and fire have the same revenue assumptions. same revenue assumptions as the general fund. The five-year forecast for the highway user revenue fund shows an increase revenue, of operating revenue by 3.5% in fiscal year 23, 24, and then increases by an average of 2.5% throughout the remainder of the forecast. The capital outlay includes about 18.3 million for pavement management for fiscal year 24 through 28, but that project will be revised as part of the 24 through 33 CIP process. Revenue assumptions for the transportation sales tax fund equal those in the general fund. Revenue estimates for fiscal year 23 increased by approximately 8% from 42 million to 45.8 million, and then assume conservative growth for the remainder of the forecast, averaging a 1% growth per year. Transportation sales tax expenditure assumptions average a 9.2% increase in fiscal year 24, then an average of 5% through the remainder of the forecast, similar to the general fund. Transportation tax capital outlay includes an average of 10.4 million for pavement management for fiscal year 24 through fiscal year 28. This project will also be revised as part of the 24 through 33 CIP process. And specific transportation sales tax projects will be presented as part of the development of the CIP. Revenue assumptions for the public safety sales tax police fund equal those in the general fund. Revised estimates for fiscal year 23 increased by 8% from 25.2 million to 27.7 million in fiscal year 23, then assume conservative growth, averaging 1% for the remainder of the forecast. And as you can see in the total surplus or deficit line, there's a planned drawdown of fund balance each year throughout the forecast to support police department expenditures in the general fund. Revenue assumptions for public safety sales tax, fire, equal those to the general fund. Revised estimates for fiscal year 23 increased by 8% from 12.6 million to 13.8 million, and then again, assume a 1% average increase throughout the remainder of the forecast. And as you can see in the total surplus deficit line within this forecast as well, there's a planned drawdown of fund balance to support fire department expenditures in the general So to summarize the special revenue funds, we will continue to watch revenues and the economy closely and manage capital outlay to stay within fund balance policies.
Mayor? Go ahead. On the, which one of the HERF slide? The bottom row is our fund balance policy of 15% in operating revenues, which we hold tight to all the way up until our projection for the 27, 28 budget, where we fall below our, our policy. How are we going to fix that?
Mayor, members of the council, council member Turner, that dollar amount assumes the spending of the contingency in each year. So if the HERF fund does not spend their 1.5 million in contingency that they have in the forecast every year, you can actually add $7.5 million to that last number, and they are above their fund balance policy.
Very good. That answer was almost as good as a question. The other question I have relates to our public safety sales tax for police and fire. You mentioned the transfers out from this fund over to the general fund. You probably don't have it today, but could we know what percentage of our public safety, fire budget, and police budget is covered by this tax, these taxes?
Mayor, members of the council, council member Turner, I do not have that number in front of me, but I can get that to you.
It was kind of out of left field, but I am curious. Thank you so much.
Moving into our enterprise funds, the enterprise funds are the water and sewer fund, solid waste and landfill. These funds are supported primarily from user fees or charges, and the funds operate similar like a non-for-profit business. The revenue assumptions include only council-approved rate increases and nominal growth for, in revenue growth. And all three of these funds have capital-intensive operations. The water and sewer fund, water rate increase, five-year rate increase was approved in October of 2021. Those rates went into effect in January of 2022 and will continue through January 2027. The forecast demonstrates water, water revenues increasing by an average of 3% throughout the forecast, and sewer revenues increasing by an average of 2%. The forecast includes the issuance of debt to support their robust capital program. Their expenditure assumptions equal those of the other funds with an average of 9.2% for fiscal year 24, 5% for fiscal year 25, and then 4% for the remainder of the forecast. The water fund has $2 million in contingency annually, and the water fund, we review this very closely with the water fund annual, or with the water department annually. They can meet their fund balance target by managing a combination of limiting their use of contingency, deferring their capital improvement projects through borrowing and rate adjustments. And you will see modifications to their capital outlay as part of the fiscal year 24 through 33 capital improvement program.
Mayor? So we, we made adjustments to the rate adjustments already, didn't we? Or we accelerated the...
Mayor, members of the council, not for water and sewer. There were five years of rates adopted.
Oh, that's right, okay.
So those last two years that you're seeing here, 27 and 28, there is no assumption that there are any additional rate increases, but that, you can see they're not truly meeting their fund balance policies. So you will at some point see them coming back to talk about either the potential to increase rates in those out-years or what it is that we're going to have to do because they're not meeting their policies by that point in time.
What is the last year of the rate increase, or when does the rate increase cycle off? That was the five-year...
I believe it's in January of 2020. It's in, I believe it's in fiscal year 25, 26.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to the solid waste fund, excuse me, solid waste residential rate increase and an increase in container fee was adopted by council in November of 21 and went into effect in February of 22. An increase to the commercial rate was presented in January of 22 and went into effect in March of 22. In June of 2022, council approved the acceleration of the scheduled rate increases for both residential and commercial solid waste, along with the addition of a fuel surcharge. Those changes went into effect in September of 2022. Solid waste operating revenue averages a 4% increase throughout the, throughout the forecast. Their expenditures are increasing by an average of 9.2% for fiscal year 24, 5% for 25, and 4% for 26 through 28, similar to the other funds. Their capital program includes the purchase of equipment, front-load, roll-off, and side-load trucks. And again, the solid waste fund will continue to be monitored. Fund balance can be maintained through operating expenditure savings, the revision of their capital improvement program, and not spending their contingency annually. Moving on to the landfill fund, landfill revenues include an increase to the gate rate that was approved by council in December of 2021 and went into effect in February of 2022. It also assumes rate increase, a rate increase that was presented to council in a workshop last month, January 2023, and are scheduled to go to council on March 14th, 2023, with an effective date for implementation on April 1st of 2023. The landfill fund assumes conservative revenue growth, averaging a 2.6% increase for tipping fees throughout the forecast. Their operating expenditures mirror the other funds with increasing by an average of 9.2% in fiscal year 24, 5% for fiscal year 25, and 4% for fiscal year 26 through 28. Revisions to their capital improvement program for fiscal years 24 through 28 demonstrate no need to issue debt to support the capital improvement program. Previous forecasts showed the landfill bond, or showed the issuance of landfill bonds totaling 4.1 million needing to be issued in fiscal year 24, 25. They no longer need to issue that debt. And the landfill fund can meet their fund balance policy throughout the forecast with the management of their capital improvement program and by not spending their annual So to summarize the enterprise funds, the departments will be holding the line on costs. We will continue to watch revenues and the economy closely, management of the capital outlay program to minimize debt service costs, potentially plan for future, future debt issuance if necessary, and ensure responsible timing of rate adjustments. And that concludes our presentation. We can take any additional questions at this time.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
This is about the budget, or a calendar. You have the capital improvement plan scheduled for one session on March 7th. Is there an opportunity, if necessary, to schedule another CIP discussion in March?
Mayor, members of the council, Vice Mayor Clark, yes. This is the tentative budget calendar. We did build in, there is time for additional workshops if necessary. So when we get into the discussion of the CIP, if council feels that they need additional time to discuss that further, we can add another workshop.
I, I have a feeling that when it comes to the CIP, more than one session will be required. Thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I also have a question on the calendar. I know we had, there had been a request to include the delivery date or the, the expected delivery date of the budget books to us, so we have ample time to, for the council to review the material before we have to make decisions. So has that been thought of? And when, when will, when are you going to try? I understand it's a lot of work and all of that, but what is your target date to have that to us?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Tomachoff, we will have those materials to you at least a week in advance of each one of these workshops.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. When in the budget, will any reports with regard to any ARPA funds we use, or any federal monies that we used over the last couple of years, will that be in our budget process?
Mr. Phelps, you want to answer that one? Over here, okay.
Mayor, members of council, we can certainly do that, yes.
Yeah, can, can we include what, how much we received and what, what those proceeds went to?
Yes, mayor, members of council.
Thank you.
We can do that.
So mayor, members of council, then again, a reminder that some of the feedback from last year's budget process where we, we broke down the CIP into kind of general fund and then enterprise funds, you said you really wanted to see them all in the same day to get the entire picture. So it is a little bit longer workshop on this day, but that was one of the changes we made based on feedback from last year's budget, where we, you recall, we broke it down into two different meetings. This will be a longer meeting, but absolutely we'll have, we've tried to build in flexibility so we can adopt and add different meetings in as well.
Any other questions?
Affordable housing development incentive program.
Well, mayor, members of the council, sometimes we joke that our HR director, Jim Brown, is the hardest working direct, HR director just because of his name, but I will tell you, we have one of the hardest working community services director, I think, in the system, in Jean Moreno, and she's going to run you through this next presentation.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. Today's presentation is a follow-up to the presentation that I had provided on January 10th, where I had proposed some affordable housing incentive programs. Today's presentation is going to be exclusively talking about the fee waiver/rebate program that I had originally proposed, and this is to follow up on some additional questions that were raised during that session. So I will briefly, just for those that are tuning in, I will briefly touch on just high level community need. A couple of things that I did not include during the last presentation, which might be valuable for council's consideration, is applicable council-adapted policies that are in place, also kind of a high-level overview of the Arizona Department of Housing programs, and then getting into more detail about the process. And those were all some of the questions that were raised during the last session. So high-level overview, these are things that we've talked about before. There's a significant increase in unsheltered homelessness in our region here in Maricopa County. We have seen a significant increase in apartment rents, which is contributing to that issue, and just an overall lack of, and a decrease of affordability of housing in our community. Here in Glendale, we have 17.3% poverty rate. That equates to, when you look at our population, that equates to about 43,000 people that are living in poverty. And when you take that into account, the average household size, and this is all based on U.S. Census data, the average household size, there's about 14,000, close to 15,000 households that would benefit from having more affordability in their housing. So currently in Glendale, and this is some important information to share, and I apologize if I'm repeating myself, in Glendale in its entirety, we have 779 units of housing that is rent-restricted as affordable. So those are privately-owned developments. Those are not including any city-owned properties in our public housing programs. The 779 units are in nine developments. Two of them are mixed income, meaning that there's some market rate units along with affordable units. I want to note that both of those mixed income developments will expire their period of affordability, one in 2024, which is about half of these units, and then another one in 2031. So that would leave us, that leaves us with seven 100% affordable developments that will expire anywhere in 2034 and 2053. As you know, we have several projects in the pipeline, which I am very happy about. It represents about 1,300 units. So in total, when you take what we have in inventory plus what we're expecting to come through the pipeline over the next couple of years, in total, we have about 2,000 affordable units to serve approximately 15,000 households that could probably benefit from affordable So I wanted to point out just some existing policies related to affordable development. So in the city's adopted general plan, there are two policies that really relate to the city's actions as it relates to enticing affordable housing. So the first one is HE 1.1, and it just talks about how the city partner to develop safe affordable housing in our community with the private sector. And then the second one very specifically says that the city should create and implement incentives, and specifically recommends fee waivers or other fee reductions. And then I believe you all are all familiar with our consolidated plan.
I have a question about that.
Yes?
With regard to the slide that you just presented and policy, general plan policy, HE 3.1, can you explain what is meant by density increases or transfers with regard to affordable housing?
Mayor and council member Clark, so this language is taken verbatim from the general plan. I would, I, we can follow up with, on the density increases and transfers, but those would be things that would be considered through a zoning process as an example, so...
Well, I would like to know, and I think we should, we need to know, council needs to know, what, what was the intent with regard to density increases or transfers?
Mayor and vice mayor, I would be happy to follow up with development services and have them sit down with you. The focus of today's presentation is not about density transfers. It is about specifically the fee waiver and rebate incentive.
Yes, but these policies, I will say, these policies are applicable policies to the question of affordable housing, and that's why they're here. And that's why I ask that we see further explanation what is meant by density increases. In other words, can a developer take a piece of land, say in the Suaro district, that is owned perhaps for R1 for housing, eight units to the acre, and because it's affordable, he's going to be granted the opportunity to bump it up to 20 units to the acre? These are the kinds of questions that I think that council needs the benefit of knowledge about. So I would ask that whatever you put together, you present to all of council. Thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Go ahead, Mr. Phelps.
Mayor, members of the council, council member Clark. So again, remember, this is a, this is really the toolbox they want us to use to try to, to hit this goal. Essentially, what it means is that there may be a, an affordable housing project... it means is that there may be a, an affordable housing project that needs a little bit more density, and it would still have to go through a zoning process, but it allows the staff to use this tool to meet this goal. But we wouldn't just automatically, it's not an automatic, it doesn't grant them the right to more density. It would just say that might be something we put onto the table. We had a project in the Ocatillo District where they wanted a little bit more density. It was a large parcel. We use that as a tool to say, yes, we can do that. And so it's not, it's not across-the-board always more density. It just means that as we work with the developers, under the appropriate scenarios, we may, we may be able to offer more density to get them over the hump to make it affordable. But we would always want to be cognizant of the impact on the surrounding neighbors and the things that are there. So we would still look at all of those conditions before discussing that with the developer.
Well, that's what concerns me is, excuse me, Mayor.
Can't hear you.
Oh, it's on.
Let it talk into it.
Hello?
There you go.
Okay. That's, that's what concerns me is that since these are usually department-director decisions as opposed to any kind of council decision, that, what are the criteria that will allow for density increases and also transfers? If we know what the specifics of the policy are, I would be more comfortable for sure with using these tools for the affordable housing industry. But without explanation, I mean, I'm just not willing to buy, buy into something I don't know anything about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Look, this is always a sore subject, and I can't wait for the day to come that, that just the negative connotation on affordable housing is just completely removed because it just gets a bad rap. This city needs to be the leading agency in setting, setting policy that is friendly to affordable housing. You just heard how many we lack in this, in this city. Yes, through a process, we should allow some type of density that allows for more affordable housing. Nobody's saying that there's going to be a lack of a process, unilaterally just do that. That couldn't happen. That's why we have great commissioners to hear those cases. But that's why it's important for us to have these robust conversations. And if we want to be a change agent in our city with regard to affordable housing, we must have robust conversations and create policies that are friendly and help developers come to our city and build more. That's what we need. And for some, and look, in my district is, is home to a lot of affordable housing, and I hope we get more projects, but it's a sore subject, and even some of my constituents are not comfortable with some of the increase in density. But without looking at increase in density, we'll never get more, more inventory of affordable housing. So I just, look, we can't have a negative connotation on affordable housing. It doesn't define the person that lives in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not interested in being the change agent. I'm not interested in being the first one out of the box to implement policies that other cities are not using. As I said at our last meeting, Glendale has worked very hard to get what the former mayor used to call us as hicks and sticks, cows and plows, to remove that image and that connotation from Glendale. And we are finally doing that. And Glendale is viewed as an up-and-coming city. And so keeping that in mind, yes, I want to help, and I keep saying this, I want to help those that are in need. But I don't want to be the first one in the block doing it. I want to see other communities step up to the plate as well. So when I say that I don't want to be the change agent, I don't want to be the first kid on the block testing out something new. I want some other communities to make the same commitment as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't know, maybe you're going to get to this. It's something that I had forgot to ask you when we talked about this last, Ms. Moreno, but, and I believe the concern, because I've had a couple of conversations with, with residents and some other people about this, is that, that I think the concern is attracting all of the affordable development, which is good for the 15,000 households that need that. But how are we going to make sure that the, that we're giving, we're assisting in developing, financially assisting in the development of affordable housing, but is there some sort of mechanism that we can provide that that housing's going to Glendale residents and that we're not building this affordable housing, and then we're having people come in, and the residents that we're trying to help, the 15,000 households, is it going to be a scoring system? And as a Glendale resident, you get, you know, and I don't know, I just want to make sure that we're doing this to help our own residents and that we're not attracting people from other places for this program.
Mayor?
Could she answer my question first, Mayor?
Absolutely.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff, so could you state your exact question?
Well, I mean, is there going to be some sort of metrics or scoring that, that gives Glendale residents seeking this affordable housing that is subsidized by waivers, you know, a higher, a higher, make it more available to them than drawing people from Phoenix and other cities? That I just don't think the intention is for Glendale residents to be competing with everybody. There's a lot of people valley-wide that need affordable housing. So the concern that I've heard and discussed with several of my residents is that, is this, how do, how can we make sure that this housing goes to Glendale? That we're, you just said, we have 15,000 households that need affordable housing, but there's, I don't know how many thousands of households valley-wide. So are we going to be able to, I don't know if that's even been considered, and if legally we can even do something to, to put into this work that, the idea is that we want to house our Glendale residents. So we want them to be able to have access to this affordable housing and not be beat out by other residents from other cities that are moving here for this affordable housing.
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff, so the primary funding mechanism for these affordable developments that we're talking about is the Arizona Department of Housing tax credit programs. So they are really the agency that is providing the most relief for these developers to make these happen. So their eligibility requirements as to how the development, or who can live in that development, that's all managed by the state. And in your packet, I included information on their qualified allocation plan and those types of things. So the eligibility piece of it as to who can apply and weightless preferences and things like that is managed by that program. What I can tell you as an example with our public housing programs is we have a preference point system where we provide Glendale residents with preference points. We cannot exclude an affordable housing asset to only Glendale residents if we are using the federal funding programs. So that I can tell you for sure. We can provide preference points for our own programs, but what you're asking is if I can dictate, because I'm providing this fee waiver to the developer, that they can restrict access to this to only Glendale residents, and that I cannot do without a development agreement. And it's very unlikely that a development agreement like that would get approved because of the funders providing that. Now, what I will say is that there is affordable development happening, happening all over Maricopa County, and there's likely going to be more affordable development if there's changes made to the Housing Trust Fund. One of our projects is the recipient, the first-time recipient of state tax credits, which is a very new program. And so I am expecting to see more. I can certainly provide the list so that you can see in context what's happening throughout the Maricopa County region versus what's happening in Glendale. As I mentioned, we have 779 units out of thousands of units in our county. And so, but very specifically, answer your question, no, I would not be able to say only Glendale residents can live here if we do this fee waiver.
Well, Mayor, I guess what I'm turning, so, but this is a, this is a, this program has to meet basically same rules as any, any, because it's an addition to the federal funding. But if we would say that we, could we say that we want at least 60% of these units to, to go to a Glendale resident, or we can't, we don't have any influence, because that's what the concern is, is that this is a tax, basically essentially subsidized by waiving fees. But the idea of what the residents want is they want to make sure we're helping Glendale families get affordable housing. So is the, are you saying there's, there's, we don't, we're not going to have any control over that?
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff, let me just give you some more information for perspective. So of the developments that are in the pipeline, those 1,300 units, the total capital investment is expected to be $479 million. They are currently experiencing a gap of about $16 million. I'm hoping that what I'm proposing here with this fee waiver, it'll probably be maybe a million dollars. It's going to depend upon the cost of the total project, maybe a million dollars. So when you take the six developments or seven developments that I have, say on average, it's a million dollars in a fee waiver, that's $7 million in comparison to 479 million that are, that they're coming to the table with private equity investments, state tax credits, and private developer funding. And so it would be, they would probably, in my opinion, and again, I want to caveat that, my opinion is that developers would say, it's not worth doing a development agreement for a million dollars when I have a 60, 70, 80 million dollar project.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, got to remove the negative connotation of affordable housing. Look, here's the thing. I've always spoken with Ms. Moreno about some of the programs within the affordable housing units, that yeah, we should offer some of those to Glendale residents. But it's okay if you're not. It's okay if you come from Phoenix, Havendale, Mesa, Scottsdale, wherever you want to come from. We'll take you. We want, we want to house you. We want you to be a resident here. And when you move here, guess what, folks? You're, you're bringing in tax revenue. You're buying gas. You're eating. You're buying groceries. You're spending in retail stores. So you're, you're generating revenue, revenue for the city that, that helped you. So when we talk about subsidizing, yeah, it's subsidizing by excluding some fees. But at the end of the day, those people are giving back. They're not, no one's saying they're living for free. So if we're going to subsidize by giving these incentives, I don't, I don't see anything free. And if we build a 200-unit facility and 50% of them are affordable, well, they're generating revenue. So I don't think it's a bad thing to have people who are not Glendale residents. But, but I agree, we should have a certain amount of Glendale residents that get some of that, the affordable housing vouchers or whatever it takes. But I see no reason why we couldn't allow others from outside of the city to take part of an affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Moreno, thank you. In the beginning of this conversation, you talked about affordable housing versus market-rate housing. There's another term I've sometimes heard used in this discussion, and that's workforce housing. Is that a recognized term, or is it, and where does it fit into affordable versus market rate?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, so the workforce housing, it's still a rent-restricted unit. It's just at a higher income level. So typically, workforce housing will be between 60 to 80% of area median income. Affordable housing is the general term that will encompass very low income, low income, and workforce housing.
Thank you. So in this conversation, and what we're talking about today, it does incorporate workforce housing, right?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, that is correct.
So we pride ourselves on creating jobs out in our 303 area, in our Westgate area, Entertainment District. We want to do the same thing in our downtown. We're creating jobs, and these are jobs, many of which need to go to, you know, need to be, the people taking those jobs are not at the market rate, because we've seen what's happened to the market. They're not at the market rate for housing. So I think it would be, if we look deeply at this, we be careful, we're not saying we want to create jobs, but we don't want to have housing for workers. And that for some reason, they should live in other communities and just come into Glendale to work. That's not what I want us to be saying. But I think if you roll back the levels of the peel of the onion, that's what we would be saying. So I think it is important that we have affordable housing, both for the low-income, moderate, and workforce needs, and that it's crucial to our growth as a city that we have that. We cannot have, in the long run, vital downtown Entertainment District 303 without providing, doing our share to provide housing for the people that will be employed there. Thank you.
Mayor? Yeah, and thank you, Mayor. And to workforce development because of affordable housing, what happens is, and there's some data that demonstrates this, those who live in affordable housings, let's just take in Glendale, guess where they work? They work locally here. So we're creating jobs by those folks moving into an affordable home. Because they're in affordable home, they don't drive out to the Intels out in, out in Chandler. They work right here in our retail stores. So we're, we're creating jobs and tax revenues. I think it's a win-win. But thank you.
So I believe that you all are...
Hold on.
Yes. I mean, if we're just talking about affordable housing, I think the numbers you presented show that we're really only covering a small portion of the greater need. And if we were saying we were going to create 15,000 units, I think I would be a little bit more concerned about that. But we're, I believe we are doing the right thing to move forward with the project, because I believe there is a real need out there for affordable housing. We do need to spread around the city, I think, a little bit, as much as we can. But I think that it needs to move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Jean?
All right. So I'm not going to get into detail on these. You've said before, these are consolidated plan goals. Again, these are just council adopted policies that are aligned to what this proposal is. So I mentioned the Arizona Department of Housing Qualified Allocation Plan. So as part of the presentation that you'll see later on, what I'm proposing is that we focus our administrative fee waiver exclusively on the Arizona Department of Housing-approved projects. And the reason why I think that's important is because the ADOH goes through a very extensive and comprehensive and somewhat complicated process before they approve tax credits for these developments. Their Qualified Allocation Plan goes through a public process. It's signed off by the governor, and it includes a whole variety, whole slew of things here, very specific underwriting standards and reward requirements and compliance requirements. So I have faith that when the Arizona Department of Housing puts their stamp of approval on a project, that it is a quality project. Obviously, they've typically been engaged with us anyway, because we do have to provide them letters of zoning conformance and those types of things. So the ADO Qualified Action Plan is a stellar process, and we can be assured of the quality development. These are some of the things that they look at when they take up, take in applications for the tax credit program. So they are looking at applicant experience. They're very specifically looking at whether or not they have experience managing tax credit projects. They're looking at market need. They're looking at funding sources. They would not approve anything that has an incompatible land use or a location. And there are some very specific things that they look at in that. And then obviously, citing zoning and infrastructure needs for the project as well. So the, at the last session, there was a discussion about income requirements and how do you do mixed income at a development. And when I'm talking about mixed income in this context, I'm talking about rent-restricted units versus non-rent-restricted units, so market-rate units. There is a way to do that. Typically, they don't happen very often. You can see out of the developments that we have, two of them are those mixed-income with market-rate units. But the, these are the requirements here. So essentially, if you want to have rents restricted at a higher rate, so 60% of the area median income, which is sort of your workforce housing, 40% of those units have to be dedicated as rent-restricted. If you allow, if you are income targeting at a lower rate, 50% of AMI or less than 20% have to be allocated as rent-restricted. And ADO's allocation plan does encourage income targeting to lower levels, but these are just the federal limits. So if, if a project is awarded, and the projects that are eligible include new construction, it includes acquisition and rehabilitation of existing apartment communities or multifamily communities, or even single-family residential in some programs, and then substantial rehab of existing owned. So if you're awarded, you have to meet all of these requirements. You have to agree to do all of these things. A 30-year rent restriction, you have to enter into covenants on your land that, that basically encumber the title on the land. There's issues. If you're noncompliant, you get reported to the IRS. But very specifically, during the last session, there's questions about, well, what if there's a change in ownership or a change in management? And under the ADO plan, ADO has to approve changes in ownership, and then they have to be notified of changes in management. to be notified of changes in management.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me ask a curious question. One of the things I think that at least a couple of council would like to see is affordable housing integrated into the larger community, rather than continuing to target just one zip code, 85301. Has anyone could, you know, and we pay a lot of lip service, but we've never figured out a way to incentivize these developers to look at locations other than within 85301. Is it possible that a plan like this could be restricted or offered to, to developers who are willing to develop outside of zip code 85301?
Mayor and Vice Mayor Clark, with what I'm proposing today, a fee waiver is not going to bridge the gap of land costs outside of 85301. So typically, the reason why you aren't seeing development in other than low-income areas is because of land cost and land availability. So those are the two biggest factors that impacted developers' ability to make a project pencil out. So is there a way to do it? Yes. And that way would be that the city goes out and acquires the land and retains ownership of the land and does the development. And so that's certainly a conversation for another day.
Well, it, it is. And if we're going to put our money where our mouth is, that's a conversation I for one would like to see. Because I think one of the ways that you pull people up is by integrating them into the community and not segregating them in enclaves of, of just like poor or undeveloped areas. So I'm willing to have that conversation as to how we can incentivize and create a more mixed approach to affordable housing. Thank you.
So the incentive program that I'm proposing today is a fee waiver or rebate, depending on where you're at in the construction process. Just noting, a request for a rebate would be limited to projects that, they would have to request that rebate no later than three months after such a certificate of occupancy is issued. And this would apply only to community development fees, it does not apply to development impact fees. And the project, obviously, this is a no-brainer, but must be compliant with all city regulations. So the process would be that the applicant submits a waiver, or excuse me, a letter to the city that outlines these things. I didn't see the need to create some cumbersome application process. We can gather all of the information we need in the letter to include the narrative about the project, their development experience, owner experience, you know, what other developments do they own, how many units in total? And then are they going to serve special populations or provide special amenities or services? That's a key component that we look at in terms of public-private partnerships, and then as well as advancing city objectives, and then obviously looking for that ADO stamp of approval. So the developer pathways, essentially, if they approach us and, you know, submit a letter to request a fee waiver or rebate, we would first look to see, did ADO already provide a, a tax credit allocation? And if they did, then that developer would be eligible for the 100% administrative fee waiver with the compliance by ADO, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that process looks like on the next slide. If they did not receive a tax credit award from the Arizona Department of Housing and the project is, meets generally the same types of requirements that ADO has, then we would, you know, work with the developer to determine if they're interested in entering into a development agreement, at which case, a development agreement always has to be approved by the city council, and then annual compliance would be taken care of by the city. So for that administrative award process, and again, just reiterating that this is for the Arizona Department of Housing awarded projects only, we get the letter, we review it, we validate the details of the, of what they've provided, validate it with the Arizona Department of Housing, make a recommendation to the city manager, the city manager would review and approve or deny, and then a copy of that approval or denial would go not only to the applicant, but to the city council and other affected departments. So with that, what I'm proposing is in addition to City Code, Chapter 2, Article 1, Section 2.3, which is there on your screen, and essentially, it just makes a declaration that the city council may waive or rebate fees as an incentive to attract development of housing. I just want to note that this language is modeled after language that's already included as it relates to council's authority to waive or rebate development fees associated with economic development projects. So this is the same tool that's used for fee waivers for economic development projects that attract jobs to our community. The last sentence talks about that the city council dedicates its authority to the city manager to waive those fees administratively for, specifically for the Arizona Department of Housing tax credit awards. And so with that, I am seeking council direction on whether or not to move forward, and if there is a desire to move forward, I will add this to a voting meeting.
Mayor? Yeah, I'm just, I'm a little concerned on waiving our authority to the city manager on whether he can, and I, I get it, because it's, it's to get it done faster, but I, I guess this depends on who the city manager is, but what criteria, will it be standard criteria that the manager would use, and not, obviously not philosophical, but rather standards we have in place already?
Mayor and Councilmember Aldama, that is correct. So we would be looking at all of those same factors that Arizona Department of Housing has in their application process. And again, they would only be eligible for that fee waiver if, I'm sorry, if ADOH had already issued an award letter. I can't fathom a situation where staff would not recommend a fee waiver for a project that's already received ADO stamp of approval, and I can't fathom that the city manager would, would do something. We just need to have that included as part of the language.
Thank you, and I agree with you, and I'm not at all implying that our city manager would. I just wanted to make sure that when I give that authority, I want to make sure there's processes and checks in, in place, and it sounds like there are. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So anytime we waive fees or revenues, the money has to be made up somewhere else. And I'm going to jump out on a limb and say we're just assuming it'll be general fund money?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, just as a reminder, these are one-time fee collections, and so in terms of forecasting those one-time fees, this is an ongoing revenue, so yes, they are general fund. And our budget, I obviously didn't come to present to council without having that discussion with our budget and finance team, the impact on ongoing operations, there shouldn't be any impact, because these are one-time fees that we haven't accounted for.
Thank you. So would it be prudent for us to set up a budget line for what we're willing to allocate towards this, so that we don't get into a alt-fuels fiasco situation, or whatever, you know, that if it's going to, you know, that we should have a limit to how much, we should have a, a threshold for what we're authorizing in a given year, or what we're authorizing to be administratively decided? And then once that threshold is met, the council would need to take action beyond it so that we don't have a runaway train?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, what I can tell you is that the Arizona Department of Housing has limitations on the number of projects they can fund in any given city in any given year. And so the concern about having 20 projects in a year, that's, that's just not going to happen. The reason why we have so many right now is because there was some special housing trust fund dollars, as well as they made changes to their 4% tax credits. Under normal circumstances, a community can only have one 9% project, and then, you know, additional 4% projects. So we could certainly look at that, but it's something that I think we should, we could monitor and obviously continue to report out to the council on, you know, fee waivers that are issued.
Okay. Do you have an estimate of what you would think, maybe you already said it and it went past me?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, so just a ballpark estimate, because we have seven projects that are in the pipeline, and just estimating around a million dollars per development, that's about $7 million. I doubt that the fee waivers will be that high. Again, it, it depends upon the total capital investment of the project. So I could certainly get you some additional information regarding the estimates based on the existing projects. I will tell you this, the number will fluctuate because the actual cost of the development, which is one of the components for assessing the fees, are continuing to increase. So just as an example, two of the projects, their construction costs are coming in at a million dollars over, so that's going to add to the development fees.
Thank you. Well, I would throw this out for council consideration if you, I would feel more comfortable if we had a, either a hard stop in our budget, or if we had a trigger threshold, so that we would be knowing whether we, you know, like, say at the 5 million point or something, so that we would know how this is working and that it, you know, not be something that gets away from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I had mentioned that when we talked about this the first time, is there, is there going to be any kind of cap? Are we going to, and would you anticipate $7 million in one year, or would that be over a period of years? I mean, the, the most amount that we would need in one year would be like 3 million or something like that, or, I mean, what, you can't build, I mean, development takes time, too, so.
Mayor and Councilmember Tomachoff, these developments are going to occur over multiple years, so three years most likely, in all of these scenarios?
I would, I would be interested in at least capping it so we have an idea that it's not going to go over a certain amount annually, and then, and then, you know, reassess, I mean, you know, if we end up in a recession and we're like, we really need the money, you know, I mean, we don't know what the future's going to, if that buy-ride zoning thing, whatever that, that legislation passes, that, you know, development may be completely out of our control anyway. So, I mean, there's a lot of variables at stake, but I, I think, you know, better, the alt-fuels thing scares me, because that got out of control pretty much right out of the bag. So...
If, if I could, help me a little bit. So there are fee waivers. If we don't do this, it's likely that some of the developers will go, we can't afford to do the project, so they're not going to do the project.
Correct.
So we're not out a penny until they decide to do the project, and then we're simply waiving fees that we would normally charge to do the project. So unlike the alt-fuel, it's totally opposite. Alt-fuel, people could do it, and then they would get massive rebates on that vehicle that the state couldn't turn off. So it's a big difference, it's a huge difference. I do, I do like the idea of putting a cap on it initially. I mean, I, I would be fine if we would cap it annually, say, $3 million a year that we would put out in fee waivers, and then let's look at it a couple of years now and see if that's working or not. We can adjust it every year if we want to do. Yes?
Mayor, we can do anything that you'd like us to do.
You know, what does the council think about that?
And, and Mayor, I did want to, I wasn't trying to say that, I forgot the term that was used, but disparage or say that I, you know, didn't understand the need for affordable housing. The point I was trying to make is every unit that goes to somebody that's already outside of Glendale is not helping one of the 15,000 families that's in Glendale that needs affordable housing. That was the only point I was trying to make, is that if there's a way that we could help the people who are already here, already our taxpayers, already living in our city that need affordable housing, if there was a way that we could help them maybe get to the front of the line, is what I was trying to find out. I wasn't saying we shouldn't help other people, but every unit that goes to somebody from somewhere else is not going to somebody who's already a Glendale resident. So that was the point I was trying to make. Thank you.
So I, I'll ask a question. Would the council support putting a $3 million cap annually on this initially for the first couple of years, and then come back and review it to at least get the program started?
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would just like to ask staff if the 3 million would be sufficient, so, as far as I can see, for the next year?
I don't mean for the project cost, I mean for our waiver portion.
Mayor and councilmembers, there's a couple of things you'd have to look at if you want an overall program cap, or if you want a per-project cap. So I would need to come, I would need to go and get some cost estimates for the existing projects that are in the pipeline in order to do that.
Mr. Phelps? Mr. Phelps?
Well, Mayor, members of council, I mean, I think, you know, when I think the, the number is a little bit larger than we would, I mean, we've never done 3 million on even the Loop 303. What I think would be, looking long-term, what would be better, is I would just say, build into the policy a requirement that whomever is city manager, when they approve that amount, that they report that clearly and succinctly back to the council. And then if the council's starting to feel the number's getting too big, then you, you call, you know, you sit down and you kind of put some framework around it. What we want to be able to do is to start indicating to ADOH, for example, that we want to attract quality affordable housing, housing programs here to Glendale. And if they have a policy which says the city manager's already been given the authority to do that, it goes a long way in terms of attracting it. So I would just put a, a reporting requirement in there, that, you know, that every time there's an intent by the city manager to waive those, they report it back out, which we do on a regular basis on the economic development side.
Mayor?
Mayor, if I may, that language is included in what's proposed.
We don't need a cap.
Does it say cumulative?
It says that we would provide the copy of the fee waiver or rebate notice to the city council. I obviously can add the word cumulative.
So that we would know how much, where we, you know, as they accumulate, we would know what the total number is, not trying to remember how many, how many of these have we seen? Because we, there's a lot of things going on all at the same time in the city.
Have an annual reporting requirement of...
Thank you.
Please.
Better out.
Okay.
So is there, what I'd be looking for is if there's consensus on the language as proposed, and I would just add an inclusion of an annual reporting requirement that shows the aggregate.
Yes.
Okay. You have a consensus?
2023 congressional update.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide item number three is the incredibly shrinking man, Ryan Lee, and he'll have the presentation for this point on.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Mayor, councilmembers, we come before you today to provide a federal legislative update. This is the first federal legislative update presented by intergovernmental programs in quite some time. So we're encouraged by some of the information we'll share, but we're also eager to continue the work and to really recapture as much of the opportunities back to Glendale as possible. Joining me today is Becky Weber, she's our federal contract lobbyist with Prime Policy Group out of Washington DC, a bipartisan advocacy and lobbying organization. So let's go ahead and get started with just a quick summary of those representing the state of Arizona and the city of Glendale. We have our two senators, our senior senator Kirsten Sinema, and our junior senator Mark Kelly. Here's our congressional map following our redistricting that took place just a couple of years ago, and those, that redistricting resulted in quite, quite a few changes for the state and for Glendale. Representing District 1 is Representative David Swiker, Representative District 2 Eli Crane, Representative Ruben Gallego representing District 3, which is the, primarily the Ocatillo District and some of the Cactus District here in the city of Glendale. District 4, representing Phoenix and parts of Tempe, is Greg Stanton. Representing the East Valley is Representative Andy Biggs. District 6 in rural Arizona is Juan Siskamani. The southern Arizona Yuma-Tucson areas, District 7, with Representative Rahul Grahalba. The central and north part of Glendale, parts of Peoria, Sun City, and North Phoenix is represented by District 8 Debbie Lesko. And the west part of Glendale, from the west part of Glendale down to the parts of Yuma and up to the northwestern part of Arizona is represented by Paul Gosar. So you see here a map of our congressional districts and how they overlay with the city of Glendale City Council districts. Again, I mentioned that Glendale's represented by District 8 up in the central and north, Congresswoman Debbie Lesko. District 3 is Congressman Ruben Gallego, representing portions of the Ocatillo and Cactus District. And District 9 is represented by Representative Paul Gosar. Becky?
Sure. Yeah. Push. Sorry. The next slide is really directed at a discussion of congressionally-directed spending, formerly referred to as earmarks. As you all probably know, beginning in the 112th Congress, Congress decided to, to ban congressionally-directed spending. That's when a member of Congress dedicates in legislation a certain amount of money for a specific project. Prior to 2011, this was done for 40, 50 years in a variety of both appropriations and typically the transportation spending bills also have done this quite a bit. There was some abuse, there was not a lot of sunshine on it. There was not a lot of sunshine on it. So in the 117th Congress, two years ago, the congressional rules changed and they decided to basically bring back earmarks and they changed the name to congressionally directed spending. They also implemented a variety of new reforms on this process to ensure that there is more accountability and sunshine and avoiding the abuses of the past. For example, every member who requests these projects has to publish the list of projects and the amounts that they're requesting on their public congressional website. The paperwork required also requires very significant budget breakdowns. They have to show evidence of community support, that kind of thing. So they've worked very well over the last two years. And there was an effort just a few weeks ago in the new House Republican Conference to go back to the earmark moratorium and it was handily defeated. So I think they're here to stay for a while. And your city has been very successfully participating in that process to bring more revenue back to the city. Hand it back to Ryan.
We have, Mayor and council, we have been very aggressive. And I want to really highlight the efforts across the entire city. Thanks to city manager Phelps, the mayor and council for contracting, giving intergovernmental programs the authority to contract out of federal contract lobbyists. Having a presence in Washington DC is very important to be able to communicate with staff in the different congressional committees. I have a personal relationship with many of the staff representing our congressional members, but it goes farther beyond that. You have staff working for Congress who are writing the rules, who are drafting the legislation, who are really in the negotiation projects, process between projects. And that's where Becky's been, and her firm has been able to provide us assistance. Also want to highlight the work of our directors and our departments. We have to act fast. Between the time that the president releases his budget and the congressional members request projects, to where they are now assigning deadlines to those projects is often only about 30 days. So within 30 days, we're being told, here's how much money can be spent. Here's the eligibility requirements. Go get us projects. And those projects have to be included in your CIP or they have to be projects that have, that are already bid or already have an estimate. We can't just pull projects out and say, this would be nice to have. So it really means a lot of quick work by our directors and their staff, and I really appreciate that. Just want to provide a quick update. And we've got the directors here of the departments, in case there's questions that I can't answer. But just wanted to give you guys an accountability update. And this is something that we're going to be providing to our congressional members when we visit them at the National League of Cities Conference later in March. So in 2021, Glendale was quick to apply for earmarks while many of the cities didn't. And as a result, we were awarded three congressional directing, directed spending requests. The first one was an awarded $480,000 to replace and improve consoles at our 901 communications center. These were everything from the cubicles, the lighting, the data ports, the equipment, grounding, paint, headset, carpets. It was a big feat to a, an area that needed improvement, especially as we are working on not only improving response times and customer support, but also trying to retain employees.
Mr. Ryan, if you'd do me one favor?
Yes.
Let's refer to these as CDS earmarks. Really has a bad taste in a lot of people's mouths. We don't need to stir people up. Being as government likes acronyms anyway, CDS, Congressional Directed Spending.
You got it, Mayor. Thank you. So for the, for the congressional directed spending or CDS, in September of 2022, an award notification was received by the city of Glendale. The city council approved and accepted that award November 8, 2022. And since then, and excuse me, in January 4, just last month, the city council approved a linking agreement contract. And so now staff is in the process of procuring the equipment, getting that installed. The second of the three projects is the Mobile Command Center, an award of $715,000 to replace our Glendale Police Department Mobile Command Center. And this is a full overhaul of our current Mobile Command Center. So this is going to be new with improved technology and improved capacity. The similar timelines, our council, with the city received notification in September of 2022 that we would be awarded. In November to 2022, the council accepted that award and just last month also agreed, entered into a linking agreement so that we could contract and procure that Mobile Command Center. The third project, and I know you guys are aware of many of these, we had an event with Senator Kelly just last year on this project. The city of Glendale was awarded $2 million to help the city construct a water interconnect project which connects the city's water supply up north to Peoria and the city of Phoenix. A great project for water conservation, water management, and also showing collaboration between the different cities here in the Northwest Valley. Speaking to our Water Services Department, the project design is 90% complete. So we're moving through the process of, of getting this project done. Intergovernmental programs and our Water Services Department have met with EPA. We've understood the criteria, eligibility requirements, and wanting to make sure that we are in line with, with everything that we've committed to, to the federal government. And we are doing just that. Just recently, December 23 of 2022, Congress passed the omnibus budget, the budget that includes all 13 appropriations that fund the federal government. In that, the city was awarded $1.33 million to rebuild and renovate three community centers in the 85301 ZIP code. We're calling this the Achieving Economic Prosperity Through Digital Equity and Inclusion Initiative. This made, this will commit vast improvements to the Glendale Community Center, the O'Neil Recreation Center and Rose, the O'Neil Community Center, excuse me, and the Rose Lane Recreation Center. This is a great story of community and collaboration. We received over 20 letters of support from our community partners, education partners, including undered, higher ed, post-secondary. We received assistance from Maricopa County and some of our nonprofit organizations with the leadership of, at the time Vice Mayor Aldama, Councilmember Aldama, reaching out to many of the schools, Councilmember Hugh and your relationship with the community. This was something that was almost overwhelming to the federal delegation. They hadn't seen a project with that many letters. Usually we attach four or five letters. And in this case, it was overwhelming need from the community and that was awarded. So we aren't as far along in the process, just because that was a couple of months ago. But I'll let you know, HUD did reach out to the city. We have a grant manager who started yesterday with the city and that grant manager will be working with myself and with Jim Burke's team to start the process of, the notification process, the contact communication, so that we can get that funding to us as soon as possible and finish these three projects.
Mayor? Well, I, I'm, I want to say thank you to you for the diligent work going after the earmarks. And I will use the word earmark and here's why. I want to thank you, too. We, so the public knows, we met with our lobbyists last night for dinner. We had a great conversation. And you just mentioned it right now, how the earmarks had a negative connotation. They, they weren't being, just so the public knows, earmarks at one time weren't being fairly used. And so the Congress said, we're going to be done with them. They've come back because they've realized that what they do to communities, they change the face of communities. So I'm not going to use an acronym. I'm going to use earmarks because these earmarks are changing the lives of people in the city that we live in. By example of these projects, we have community centers, two in my district that are just incredible. And it's because of earmarks. When earmarks are being used appropriately and ethically, they change cities and they've changed Glendale. They've done so much. And so it's important to, for me, to not use an acronym to hide a funding source that's, that's provided to us by the federal government and being used in a positive way, in an ethical way, through a process, through diligent work of our lobbyists and our staff. And so I want to thank you very much. You've made an impact in my district by the projects that we have completed and the projects that we're going to continue to go after. And it's just improving my district and it's improving Councilmember Hughes and a few others. And so I think that earmarks do have a bad name, but the earmarks we've been going after have been used ethically. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Okay, we're about to kick off the fiscal 2024 process. That usually kicks off with the submission of the president's budget. Normally, that would be this month. But because the omnibus appropriations bill didn't get enacted by Congress until two days before Christmas, it's a little bit delayed. We understand that President Biden will submit the budget to the Congress on March 9. That's the date we've been told. And that will really, that formally kicks off the appropriations process. At that point, all of the transportation subcommittees, there's 13 subcommittees, they divide the federal government and all the programming and agencies into 13 subcommittees. And each of them will then kind of produce their guidelines for congressionally directed spending earmarks, whatever the global word is we want to call them. And that will include, you know, he, here are the categories of funding we're going to earmark. That can change from year to year. We can kind of anticipate, but, but they might decide, you know, this year, we're going to earmark, we're going to project direct more, more types of programs. Remember that this spending is not new spending. This spending is dedicating a portion of spending that's already going to go out in some fashion, either by a formula or a competitive grant. And it's saying the members of Congress are going to dictate a certain portion. So we will get that information pretty, I would guess, within the next week after the budget comes up. And there will also be a deadline for every subcommittee in house and senate. And this is something that Ryan and I have to keep track of, of every, every subcommittee will have a different deadline on when the members have to submit their projects. Then every member of Congress who participates in this process, which is the majority, not, not everyone, but the majority, will also have and set their own internal deadline. So for example, Kyra San Gallego will say, I need to see all the projects that you want me to carry by a deadline that's forward of the appropriations deadline. So we have to pay attention to those deadlines and make sure that we get the projects for that specific district into that member's office, be able to answer any questions they might have, provide other information. And often this is a very dynamic process. We'll, for example, on the broadband community center digital equity project, there was a lot of back and forth on, you know, can we bundle three, three community centers into one project, for example. So that will go on. And then the appropriations committees will begin to do their work. I want to remind everyone that the ultimate decision on what projects are going to be advanced is up to the individual members of Congress. And they have a limit. In the last Congress, each member could only submit 10 total projects to, to the process. So, you know, that will be their decision amongst the, and they will get a vast number above that submitted to them. There's some typical categories on your slide of typical pots of funding that members traditionally gravitate towards. This is certainly not meant to be limiting in any way, but these are just a sampling of typical areas that are heavily participate in this process. So that's what will happen over the next, the next few months will be very busy for, for us to get all of that information to our members.
Mayor? Yeah, I wonder, just for those who are watching, our citizens, that, you know, just, just one project pays for our fee to our lobbyists and our firm, just one, but we have multiple over many years. And I, I just want to thank our city for investing in a lobbyist that can bring in tons of federal dollars to improve our city. And it's, it's this team right here that, that does that. But I thank you for, for your work. But you, it's one of those things where you, you pay for your own salary by, by the work that you do and the projects you bring in. So thank you.
Thank you. And so we have a lot of work to do. We're putting projects together currently so that we can be prepared for when the criteria comes. We're going to be very aggressive in requesting congressional directed spending projects to all of our members of Congress, our three members representing Glendale in the House and our two senators. Something that intergovernmental programs prides itself on is also providing customer service internally to our departments. Our, our departments have been very aggressive over the last 24 months, searching for funding opportunities with all the different buckets of money. There's been different appropriations and, and opportunities for Glendale to receive grant dollars. And so our departments really take the lead. They, they identify what programs or what, what grants are available to them. They'll assist in the grant writing process. And then intergovernmental programs will seek out support from our congressional delegation. So we'll be seeking letters of support. We'll be setting up meetings so we can walk the staff through the project, hoping that they'll carry some of the water for us, whether it's making calls to the agencies or it's, you know, making a special request through Congress. So just in the last year, we have been fortunate as a city to receive grant money from FAA to improve tax away reconstruction at the Glendale Municipal Airport. Just in the last month, we've received a grant for safe streets and roads for all grant of $799,000. And as Judge DiPiazza has proudly shared in his success at the Veterans Court, we've received a $200,000 grant to, to help the judge and his team get that program started. So we, as part of our meetings this morning, Becky and I have met with staff and are seeking information on future grants that the city is already working on. Even if we know that the notice of funding hasn't been released, we can anticipate those grants and then start doing the work with our congressional members and our federal delegation and their staff so that they can provide assistance. Also, Becky's firm has a vast knowledge of different aspects associated, you know, from water to transportation to public safety and so on. And so if we, we've encouraged our staff, get us those applications with enough time that her firm can review it, catch some of the key areas and help us improve that so we can be more competitive.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you. I, one of the, the water project was a huge benefit to my district. It wasn't long after I was elected that I found out that there was no redundant water supply in my district and thought that was pretty scary. So I really appreciate that. And we had a good conversation with Senator Kelly about always having a backup plan. And so he was really on board with that project. So thank you for getting that across the finish line. I want to understand, and I want people who may be watching this, you know, now or later to understand, are we seeking federal funding for projects that are already in our CIP? Are these additional projects that are not in our CIP? Or how do we decide what, what we're going to pursue?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that's a really good question because I think it, there's a perception of some uncertainty on how does staff get to those projects. And that's very fair. Again, it comes back to what are the, what's the eligibility criteria? And what can we present to our congressional, to our federal delegation quick enough that has all the backup material? So sometimes it is items that are in the CIP or it's, you know, project improvements that already have council interest that we know, because we also have to be able to demonstrate that we are shovel ready. We have to, so the congressional directed spending projects can't have already begun. They can't be reimbursed and looked in the arrears. They have to be forward. They have to be ready to go and, and eligible. And so we will look at capital improvement projects. We'll look at some council initiatives and decide if those are something that we can achieve, not only tell the story and be able to give an accurate description, but also be able to execute during the 12-month window where that funding is eligible. So once we take that, once we have all that information, we take it back to the senator or the congressional members for their feedback.
So Mayor, if I could, say, for example, I mean, and I know that this, this is something that actually transpires, that there was. that actually transpires, that there was some investigating on, on a project to, to get federal funding for a parking garage. But I mean, so how do we vet what, what ends up on, on Becky's plate and people on the plate at her firm? Or is it just kind of, you know, I mean, on the backend and the administrative side, is it kind of a, just, you know, throw it, throw it up the wall and see if it sticks?
Yeah, you know, really, it, it comes down to what is of interest to the congressional members? That's been, that's been our approach so far. And so if there's additional guidance that's needed, you know, we're certainly open as intergovernmental programs.
Well, I'm just trying to understand, like, from the city's perspective, how does, how does, is, do we have a process on how, how does something end up on, on Becky's desk?
Yeah, administrative, sorry, I'm, sorry, Council?
No, that's fine, I'm finished.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, through the chair, yes. Yeah, the, the process has been really staff-driven in what is achievable, you know, what we think has the easiest path to getting funded. If there's a greater desire to create a process, we'd be open to that. The success that we have doesn't mean that we're not doing it the right way or the most efficient way, if that's seen by the city council. So this is our opportunity standing before you today to get that feedback on what you would like us to do. Without any feedback, we would continue to, again, look for projects that are shovel-ready, projects that have been budgeted, projects that have an estimate and a narrative so that we can take that back to our elected officials and get their feedback.
I guess my, my, just my, my point is, Mayor, that, I guess, I don't know how, I don't know how to, I want to be careful how I word this, but that things that are, things that are being proposed, at least to be investigated, are not necessarily like a pet project or something like that. So, and that we're not aware that, that, you know, that our lobbyist that's being paid with taxpayer money is pursuing something that we may or may not even be aware of. So that's, that, I just don't know if there's a way to keep us informed of things that are being, you know, when something ends up on, on, at their firm, that we know that, you know, they're, it's something, I mean, especially in the, the instance of the parking garage is something that, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty sure we knew was never going to fly. So our lobbyists are spending time on pursuing something that can't be spent on pursuing something else where they can be successful, I guess is the point I'm trying to make. Thank you.
Mr. Lee, I understand what she's saying, kind of. What's the main criteria? It has to be shovel-ready? It has to be something legislatively that the council has expressed a desire to accomplish? Is that correct?
Yeah, Mayor, we've been working within those parameters, absolutely.
So it, it would be hard for the lobbyists to just to do their own thing, or the city to do it without us if, if we already have that criteria established?
But I'm, Mayor, if I could, what I'm saying is that, at least in the instance of the parking garage, I don't think we established any criteria to pursue federal funding for a parking garage. So that's what, that's what I'm saying is how to, and then that's time spent, you know, talking to congressional people, aides and staff on something that we, you know, some of us weren't even aware it was happening. So that's, that's all. I just want, I just don't know if there's a way that, and then, like I said, I mean, then there's time taken, there's lots of opportunity, and so you kind of have to focus your time and attention on things where you know you can be successful, or where there's a possibility of being successful. So that's, I just want to make sure that we're not having pursued of necessarily of pet projects or things that there's no consensus from this body to pursue.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sure I have a project I'm going to suggest, and other council members may have as well. And I think this would be a, a good time for each of us to offer anything that we know of. But for example, the sports fields at Heroes Park, we have a gap of $4 million that has not, does not cover all of the program design for that sports, those sports fields. Now, I would think encouraging youth, mobility, healthy habits, et cetera, it might fit into something. And it is a project that's in design and will be shovel-ready by the time that, that these grant awards are made. So I would offer that you look at or investigate the $4 million gap on the Heroes Park sports fields and see if we can get that covered through a federal grant. Thank you.
I want to be clear, were you looking for projects right now? Is that what you were doing?
Mayor, no, we were not, but Council, Mayor, Councilmember Clark, we'd be happy to have that discussion with staff.
Very good, thank you.
Okay, because if you are, I do have a pet project.
Yes.
And two of the criteria that was on there, that something that they expressed interest was homelessness and veterans. And everybody knows where my heart is with veterans, you know, the, the Veterans Village. If there is a way without strings that, that the particular people that we're thinking about using were very adamant about, very difficult to work with the government because of the strings, if we could get around it without the strings, a, a method to get some funding to help that project move forward, I absolutely would support that 100%.
Mayor, councilmembers, here's what we can do. Just before the start of the League Conference, the League of Arizona Cities and Towns has a public policy process where council members can submit items of interest. That's where we went through and vetted policy for firework legislation, council member, or the liquor license, or the, the public posting bill. And that gives the council members time to provide some interest. And so what we can do through intergovernmental programs is email the council and say, this is an opportunity for you to share some items of interest that your, that you may have for your district for funding opportunities. It'll take some time for us to review with staff, but then ultimately, we'll send those off to the congressional members where the districts reside. So, you know, in your case, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Clark, we would be submitting that to Congressman Gosar's district. And then, you know, for Councilmember Turner, it'd be Congressman Lesko's district and...
Well, they're dead.
So, but we'll, we'll go, we'll go through that process and make that formal request.
Good luck with that.
Yeah. Let's go ahead and talk about, we'll, we'll finish with the policy advocacy piece.
Okay, just, we wanted to advise that in addition to the grants and the congressionally directed spending, we also have been helping with various policy issues that pop up that either you all have raised or that have come up through the various departments. And these are just some examples of things we've worked on over the last year, you know, trying to work with the post office to address blight and, and ugly landscaping at, at kind of one of your premier post offices. On infrastructure spending, obviously, just the big infrastructure bill that was passed in November of '21, there was a lot, there's just continuing to be a lot of implementation of that bill. And that's a five-year bill. So that, that bill will go through 2026 with all the typical funding for highway transit programs, motor carrier safety, as well as rail, as well as a whole variety of environmental and EV green programs. So we periodically weigh in on, you know, the government is still putting out guidance and grants on, on the infrastructure bill. So that's something we look at.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm really interested in what you're saying about policy and policy advocacy. There, there are issues within the city of Glendale that I think would fit within that policy advocacy. And I, I wonder how we can find out whether something we're thinking about would fit in that. For example, scallop streets, which we talked about this afternoon, are always a big problem. And it's infrastructure that is not, has never been developed for maybe 20 years on a road. Would that fit within this bill, this five-year bill that you're talking about, about transportation infrastructure? How do we find out what things that might be applicable to our city fit within this bill so that we can suggest to you all what, what we know locally, which might work and could benefit from it?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Clark, we, we get some assistance from our, our senators. They'll send out different newsletters and let us know what is available, what criteria there is. And so we're constantly watching for that, that guidance. And also using the assistance of MAG and Becky's team, we're able to see really where the money's at and what we're eligible for. A lot of what was in that infrastructure bill is going to be protected for, you know, in the indigenous communities, it's going to be for small communities, it's going to be for rural Arizona. So we're trying to figure out where, you know, what we're eligible for, and then how we fit within that criteria. So there's been a lot of different organizations that have been helpful in that.
Well, it, it might be through the, through the mayor, yeah. It might be helpful if every once in a while, you let us as a council know what opportunities there are out there, because we might know about something that nobody has really thought about, and our constituents have brought it to our attention, and maybe we could get funding to address those things.
Yeah, absolutely.
Mayor? Yeah, so what I'm hearing is really interesting. We talked about not using earmarks as a word, but, and Councilmember Tomachoff has, has made a good point. So then why don't we create a, a council prior, a council earmark priorities process that we bring in, we can, and staff can bring them in? And there is no pet projects, they, they all reviewed by the council, reviewed by staff. We take them through a process and then we submit them to our lobbyists to go after those projects. They, it's just like our CIP process. It may be in my district, it may not be, but we all have a fair shot at it. So why don't we, I don't know if the council would support that, but creating a policy that, that we look at all those projects, that way it isn't anyone's pet, pet project? So I throw that out there, if the council would support that, I think that we, we start to implement that now. Thank you, Mayor. And would that help you?
Yeah, I, I'm not really sure that that's anything different than a council item of special interest right now. Well, I mean, we're still being brought up, we're still discussing it. It's got merit, we talk about it, and we can certainly push it forward.
Mayor, if I may, the only difference is, is we're using the earmarks for it and the item of interest could.
I'm not using earmarks myself, you can.
Well, we're using the word earmarks, whatever, those projects that go to our lobbyists for earmark funds should be through a process.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, my only can, we'll do what's, you know, the, we'll go off the consensus of the council. We just want to make sure that with the limited time that we have, and not understanding all of the interests of, of Congress and also our own members, that we're not overburdening staff with doing research on projects that may not even be of interest to the, to the congressional members. And so that, that's kind of the, the give and take here, is when we meet with Congressman Gallego's office, for example, you know, he'll say, hey, I'm only interested in a project that, you know, within, I'm more interested in a project within my district, and here's some of the, the things that are interested in me. And then we have two weeks to try to figure out, you know, how we put all of that together. And so I just want to make sure we're not, you know, going and overburdening staff in a, in a way, but I understand what you're saying as well. And so I want to be sympathetic to making sure that we have items that are of all the council members' interests, but also know that what we're doing currently is within the framework that Congress has set, and we're trying to be competitive for projects. We don't want to slow ourselves down.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think, for me anyway, I would just like to be informed. I would like to be informed on what is the city pursuing, because that's, that's the, at least for me, the missing link is that I don't, I don't really want to take over control. You guys understand how the process works. You're face-to-face talking to the staff of the senator, the congressman, you understand what their wheelhouse is and the stuff they're really want to go to bat for. I mean, I think that's kind of essentially what you're saying, is that, you know, Congressman Gallego may be willing to go to bat for this kind of project, where Senator Sinema maybe really, she'd really prefer to go to bat for some other kind of project. So there's a lot of nuances and things like that, and I understand that. My point is that I think for, I don't know if everybody else feels the same way, I would like to understand what we're pursuing. Like, if I saw a list of projects and I was like, why are we pursuing, even pursuing, I'll go back to the parking garage? Why are we even, have anybody spend any time having conversations about that? So if there's a way just to give us, you know, a memo or something saying, here, here's what we're planning on going, you know, going door knocking with. This is, this is, this is our mission. Do, does everybody, you know, do you think we're, we're covering things? Is there something, maybe, maybe there's something that maybe fits that criteria? If, if a council member, for example, Joyce sees a project and she says, well, it kind of, I think, kind of fits into the, the person's wheelhouse, it's a similar project, maybe we could, I know, I understand the time restrictions, but, you know, that you maybe roll that over to the, to the next budget cycle, too. So, but at least we're, we're under, have a better understanding of, of our federal lobbying activity. I don't think very many of us have a very good grasp on exactly what's happening.
Mayor?
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think our process is working that we currently have. We, we have a lobbyist who keeps us, the city, informed of what is available. You know, we're not out there seeking pet projects, the staff isn't. We're, we're simply going after what is or may be available. What I see, the problem of, of us putting forth any kind of list of saying, this is what we want, is we don't know, and I think it would be disadvantageous for us to, to approach Congress with projects that aren't even available to be discussed. And that's kind of what we would be doing. Yeah, we all have projects we'd like to do, but the, the system's working the way we're doing it now, and I think we need to pursue that system. We have a lobbyist, we have our staff, they're, they're going forward. I would agree that having reports back would be important, of course, to know what is out there that you are pursuing, and what is out there that, that will work and, for the city of Glendale. So I think we, we continue doing that process, add perhaps some reporting, and I think the system is, is, is going to work well. We've seen it work already. I mean, look at what happened in, in the last two years. We've got, you know, millions of dollars granted to us using this project for projects that I think we all agree with. So let's move forward and keep doing it and not, not try to confuse the, the process. Thanks.
Mayor?
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just have one question, because I'm really confused at this point. Councilmember Tomachoff, you keep talking about a parking garage. What parking garage are you referring to? And where is there any documentation that we were pursuing a parking garage?
I don't believe there's, Mayor, if I could, there's any documentation, but I was made aware in discussions that there were some conversations had about possibly getting federal funding for a parking garage.
So it was conversation, but no real action?
But it was, no, that the lobbyist had been contacted. But I mean, I'm not, this isn't a courtroom, I'm not, in a deposition, I'm not going to dime people out who had told me, but I am aware that there were requests made by our lobbyists to poke around and see if there was federal funding available for a parking garage. So, and I would say that I, I would trust, trust where I heard the information to be accurate. And all I, and just to clarify, Mayor, if I could, I'm, all I'm saying is, I would, myself would like to be informed. I don't want to have control over it or anything else. I just would like to know what's being pursued as, as, as it's moving forward. And then that would give us, give, they would better inform us of the kind of things that are available, and then maybe early on in the project, say, hey, if there's an opportunity for Heroes Park sports fields, it looks like maybe it might be something that might be an opportunity down the road for us. But we don't, aren't really aware of everything that we're pursuing. So that's all I'm saying, is I would like to understand what your slate of, of objective is, objectives is for this cycle. Thank you.
Mayor, just one final comment or question. So this was a thought that somebody had to pursue a parking garage, but there was no formal pursuit of it? Is that what I'm understanding, that it was an idea that someone had? It was discussed with various people, but no real action was taken on it, and it never went anywhere?
I never asked our lobbyist how much action was taken on it. I just know that it was an ask to go check around.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I would certainly support more communication about the opportunities that may exist, or asking council members for ideas they may have that could be useful, and sharing of the ideas that others have come up with. And for two reasons, one is that, well, so things that are in our, already in our approved capital improvement plan, I, I don't think we need to go back and review those. I don't think there's anything in there that we wouldn't rather have done sooner than later. Okay? But then for other, for other things, I think it would be helpful. There could be nothing more embarrassing than for a member of Congress to get an appropriation for our community that this council didn't feel was appropriate or that we didn't want to do. That would be a big egg on our face. But also, there are things that maybe... But also, there are things that maybe come up, that could be, as was mentioned earlier, bundled together in a way that could benefit more than one part of our town, or could overlap congressional districts, look for support elsewhere. I notice on the slide here that, that we're looking for some improvements, addressing blight at one of our post offices. Well, we have three post offices that I can think of, and Joyce may have one I don't know about, but I just think of the three that we do, that I'm familiar with. And, you know, tell them what's over at Heroes Park. But at any rate, the, you know, I know the post office in my district has the same kinds of issues as the, the one that, farther up north, and honestly, I think the, the one in the Alcatel district might use some help, too, if that councilmember thought it was a, a useful thing to do. So, had we all been aware of it, we might have put that all together and be working on all of it. So, again, it's communication. Sometimes I think people forget what a resource the seven of us are up here, not just what we know, but also what we know in our community, and the people that, that we work with and have contact with, and I just, it's, we have a terrific staff, but, you know, they don't know everything either, you know, so we, we need to work together and communicate more. Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, councilmembers, we'll close with our legislative update, or our website, Intergovernmental Programs website, that's been updated with the new congressional maps, our new contact information for our individual districts, the three congressional districts, and our two senators. And with that, we are available for any questions.
I think we've asked them all.
All right, moving on. Item next is city manager's report, Mr. Phelps.
Mayor, members of the council, just, just two items real quickly. The Super Bowl viewership numbers have just come in this morning, and there were 113 million viewers tuned into the Super Bowl and saw Glendale, Arizona, a number of times. This is the third most, most-watched television program in history. First was the 2015 Super Bowl here in Glendale, so we hold the distinction of having the number one and number three all-time highest viewership. Now, there, you know, that's something to be real proud about, and I just want to say it was, I think, nearly a flawless execution of the plan, considering the complexity and size of how much larger it was, how these keep getting larger. And we had nine different city departments that were involved in the planning for the past, past 22 months on this project, and I just couldn't be more proud of the team that helped execute this. There were people who put in incredibly long days to make sure this happens, and so just as the city manager to my staff, and the people I get a chance to lead, I'm just so proud of what they're able to do. The, the second is, also follows up on that theme, and then we were just recently notified that Sue Breeding, who leads our communications team, has been selected as an honorary for the Phoenix Business Journal's Outstanding Women in Business Award. This is really a, quite an accomplishment, and it recognizes women from every industry and profession, and their criteria is they want to, they have to make a difference in their community, blazed a trail for women, and are leaving a mark in the community. And obviously, you've all worked with her on a regular basis, Sue and her team does a great job, but we're real excited for her nomination, and we'll certainly do some things to honor her when she's actually received the award. But I, I wanted to call it out today and just, and, and offer that congratulations as well. Mr. Mayor, that completes my report.
Thank you. City Attorney's report.
No report, thank you.
Well, you're consistent, that's for sure. Okay, council item special interest, Councilmember Aldama.
Thing now, yes, I do have two of them, thank you, Mayor. While walking around downtown Glendale, I've noticed, and I still notice, that we have a mismatch of trash receptacles, trash receptacles throughout downtown. Some of them are made of pre-cast concrete, and they're stamped "City of Glendale," and others are just 55-gallon drums. We need to do better, and can you bring back a plan to replace those? I know that with probably the remodel, we're probably going to replace some of those, but we're City of Glendale, we shouldn't have 55-gallon drums for trash receptacles, and if there's anywhere else in the city like that, I'd like to know, but I'd like to know if we can have a plan to replace those with actual trash receptacles, number one. Number two, looking at a report from code enforcement that Code sent me, they send it to us on a monthly basis, and I'm not sure that, I want a higher number of enforcement or a lower number of enforcement, but I know that Councilmember Malnar worked with staff to make a focal point of an area in his district, and his numbers went from maybe 139 to over 300. That's because of direct focus on an area. I have got a lot of attention from my constituents with regard to more enforcement for parking, weeds, and many other code enforcement. I'm asking an item of interest to, to make part of Glendale, or part of the Alcatel district, and any other district that needs it, make it a focal area, and have some specific, or some specific code enforcement to those areas, and I need it pretty quickly, so if, if city manager will have somebody meet with me, I want to talk about that. In, in one of the reports, there were, I believe, six parking violations. I've had 20 people call me about parking issues in there, so I don't know what's going on with, with the enforcement, but the district, by demand of my constituents, are looking for the district to be a focal point of enforcement to, to eliminate or reduce the blight in the community. So, that's my item of interest, and I look forward to meeting with staff. Thank you.
Councilmember you.
Nothing, Mayor.
Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, recently, I've, I've noticed we have received a lot of requests for public records, and what I'd like to do is staff to, to look into this regarding the cost to the city of doing these public record requests, and the associated charges that we may be charging individuals for these record requests, and also a comparison of the policies and procedures of other cities in the local area on how they deal with record requests. Because, again, I, I know that it's, it's a, it seems to, from the words I'm aver, the conversations I'm having with some staff, is that, that it's getting a little bit burdensome, and it is becoming quite costly. And I just want to know if we are recovering some of those costs, or what we are doing, and how other cities are handling that.
That it? Councilmember Tomachoff.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to have a, a report as sometime during the budget process of money that was allocated in this, in this budget that we're in right now, and that is unspent, not CIP money, but allocated and unspent money. I know some other cities have, have told me about how they handle this type of, and basically, the council gets a report in some other cities, and they know where all of the unspent money is, and then they make decisions on what to do with that money. Not CIP, because I understand there's carryovers and things like that in projects, but not in just general operating budget. I don't know how much there is, but I'd like to have that report and have us, at least have an idea of where that money is, and if there was anything, as a consensus, to use that money for. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner.
Not today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor.
All right, well, and I, I will finish up, and we have to talk about the Super Bowl, just because it's, it's the biggest game, right? This, this last couple of weeks, and I'm not going to speak just for myself, I, I know that our city manager, I know that our police chief, our fire chief, Rick St. James, everybody, a lot of people, spent a ridiculous amount of time trying to make sure and certain that we put on the very best event that at least our part of it was. At the same time, I reminded citizens all the time that when the Super Bowl's here, they, they cannot, nor should they expect, or not expect, if they dial 911 to get the same exact level of service as they're accustomed to. And I can tell you, I, I honestly could not be more proud of our police department, our fire department, and, and literally everybody, the streets, the people I've seen, the amount of work, the ethic, I was, I understood that there was people that worked for the airport that were literally out there sleeping in the airport, because it was too important for them to leave. I, I don't, I just don't know if people really understand the amount of effort that everybody put into this. Also understand there was a hit and run during the Super Bowl, and our real-time crime center solved a crime very quickly because of that, that hit and run. So, I hope that people are half as proud as I am, I don't know if they can be a tenth as proud as Kevin is, but we, we got some outstanding people, they did a great job. But I'm not saying I'm ready for a Super Bowl next year, I'm not saying that. But we'd sure look at it if I came back, so. With that said, I do want to thank everybody for being here today. We have any other questions or anything? If not, can I get a motion to go into executive session? So move. Have a motion, have a second, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. If there's a, if I do have it, this council meeting is recessed.